Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Ventura County Board of Supervisors Special Meeting today at 8:30 for May 12, 2020. Can we get a roll call, please?
Supervisor Zaragoza? Supervisor Zaragoza?
I do know let's see him, I'm sure he's on. For everyone who is watching today, we have four Board of Supervisors that are joining us through the.
Good morning, everyone.
Supervisors Zaragoza reporting.
There we go.
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Here.
Supervisor Huber?
Here.
Supervisor Long?
Here, thank you. So all the board members are joining in on this special board meeting today as we come together specifically for COVID-19 updates for our community. I would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance if everyone can join me, please. Right hand over heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which we stand, one nation, united in principle, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Board members, we have the next items are minutes for the board meeting that was held on May Tuesday, 2020. Is there any corrections or questions? And if not, can I get a motion to approve?
Huber, move approval. Second Zaragoza.
It's been first by Supervisor Huber and second by Supervisor Zaragoza. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, and at that moment, a motion has been approved. Thank you. On to our agenda review for this meeting today. Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Chair Long. Item eight, public comments. Comment letters from Jocelyn Carrillo, Elke Bruckenier, and Louise Lampara have been submitted. Item 14, Public Works. The adoption of a resolution imposing a temporary no parking zone in the La Conchita area. Fifty-four comment letters submitted by Joe Reo of Law Copy LLC and one comment letter submitted by Don Smiley have been received. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, and I would like to make sure that we move item 11, which is the COVID-19 report, up after public comments number eight, so we can get right to that. Is there any further discussion supervisors? Can I get a motion to approve?
So move Zaragoza.
Thank you.
Second Huber.
First by Supervisor Zaragoza and second by Supervisor Huber. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, so our agenda has been approved for today's special meeting. Next item we have is our Moment of Inspiration. We like to start our meeting off with some inspiration to set us on our path. And today, our Moment of Inspiration will be provided by our probation agency. This is recognition for our Nation's Correctional Officers Week, which is May 3 through the 9th, and we're celebrating the work and dedication of professionals who work in custody facilities. Are we ready to start some music? This is starting it off right. We wanted to highlight the important work of our correction service officers and the vital services they provide for youth in local juvenile justice facilities during our COVID-19 and throughout the year. I would like to introduce our Chief Probation Officer, Mark Varela, to say a few words and to get us started for today.
Good morning, Chair Long. County supervisors who are attending remotely, CEO Powers, and members of the public who are tuning in today. For the record, Mark Varela, your probation agency director and county chief probation officer. First, I want to thank you for allowing us to do this Moment of Inspiration in recognition of National Correctional Officers Week. First, before I make any comments, I'd like to show you a brief three, three and a half minute video that kind of demonstrates what our CSOs do every day. My name is Mark Varela, and I am Ventura County's Chief Probation Officer. The week of May 3 through May 9 is National Correctional Officers Week. First proclaimed in 1984 by then-President Ronald Reagan, this week is intended to be a time where we recognize the professionalism, integrity, and the strength of our correctional professionals in oftentimes challenging environments. In Ventura County, the correction services officers employed by the probation agency fulfill this vital role. Aside from the direct supervision and monitoring of youth in our detention facilities and adult clients in our jail alternative work release program, our CSOs work on the front lines of our local justice system, many times as mentors, as coaches, teachers, even surrogate parents and role models for many individuals in crisis and those in need of different levels of support. As you know, the coronavirus pandemic has impacted all of us. Due to our local public health order, many of our system partners have been unable to deliver services in our youth detention facilities, our onsite school program has temporarily shut down, mental health services significantly reduced, precious outside visits suspended, and needed facility programming by outside vendors placed on hold. Our CSOs have stepped up to cover these important gaps, and in doing so, they have demonstrated impressive versatility and passion. While most of the public remains at home in compliance with the public health stay-at-home order, our CSOs, similar to our healthcare professionals and our partners in public safety, leave their families each day to come in to provide essential and vital community services for individuals entrusted in our care. So for these reasons, please join me as we collectively express our appreciation and gratitude for the wonderful and important work of our CSOs during this nationally recognized week. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Randy Balli, and my job title is Correction Services Officer One. Being a correction services officer to me means shaping the future. The youth in our system are our future. Not only are we there to supervise them, but we are there to help in their rehabilitation process. We are step one of many in letting them know that there is a better future outside our doors and that there are people who care for them and support their future. From a young age, I always knew I wanted to work for the criminal justice system. After being sworn in, I can successfully say I completed my goal. Not only am I proud to be a correction services officer, I am proud to work for this agency and help shape the lives of the youth.
So that video was put together by one of our senior deputy probation officers, Leonard Salinas, did a fabulous job in putting that together in a couple of days. So the probation agency is statutorily responsible for operating our juvenile justice facilities here in Ventura County. On any given day, we have 75 to 85 youth who are there either pre-adjudication, post-adjudication, going through the juvenile court process, or they're serving a commitment in custody. Our CSOs primarily staff our juvenile facilities. Their primary job is for the supervision and monitoring and the care of the youth that are in our care, but as you saw by the video, their job goes way beyond that. As we began to learn about the devastating impact of coronavirus, not only across the world, but certainly in our nation, Chief Deputy Tim Dowler, who oversees our juvenile facility and the leadership team at the facility, put together a comprehensive contingency plan in the event that we would have an outbreak of COVID in our facility. So the focus was prevention and to keep the virus out and then mitigation if it happened to come inside the doors. The plan was so well received that the Board of State Community Corrections used that as a template for other counties and distributed that plan statewide. But as you know, a plan without execution is just a plan. It was on, the heavy lift was on the backs of our CSOs who every day make that plan work, not only at the time of implementation, but ongoing strategies that they've used to keep and prevent COVID from coming in. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Correction Services Officer Two, Justin Burdine, who's going to talk to you a little bit about our CSOs and the wonderful work they do in our facility. So I'll ask Justin to come on up.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I would like to start off by having everybody give a round of applause for the CSOs that do this on a daily basis. This is all year round, so. Also want to give a special thanks to the DPOs who were redeployed during this time. They've been a huge help. We would not be able to think without them. They did amazing job without complaining, just coming back and stepping in as role of CSO. So I want to give special thanks to them also. You know, being redeployed, you know, isn't always fun, but we have a lot of them out there that are volunteering right now, and that means a lot to us. Sometimes in the facility, it's one of those things where it's a thankless job. We're teachers when they aren't there, we're behavior health more than half of the day. We may be the only positive, you know, role model that they have in their entire life, and we have to keep that in the back of our mind at all times. And then also, we have to remember that we're keeping safety and security at the forefront of our mind always during those positive interactions, whether it's discipline or, you know, actually helping them through a critical situation. One thing is, I want to say thank you. For me, it's amazing to have a central job in these times. It's definitely uncharted waters that we're all going through right now, and I want to say thank you to all the CSOs who are out there doing an amazing job on a daily basis. Most of all, I want to thank our families. They're the ones sacrificing every day as coming to work, you know, possibly coming in contact with something and maybe outside of the COVID, TB, other types of things that we deal with on a daily basis. So I want to thank our families for being understanding and for being there at the end of a stressful day, letting us decompress, because, let's be honest, they're our real heroes, so thank you.
Thank you, Justin, very much. Well said.
So just finally, on behalf of all the dedicated men and women in our CSO ranks, and certainly on behalf of the whole entire probation agency, thank you for allowing us to talk a little bit about our CSOs, the job that they're doing, and really appreciate the recognition for this special week, so thank you.
Thank you very much, and I have a resolution that I'm going to bring down to you, but I just wanted to hit a couple of things. And in Ventura County, our correction service officers provide safe work crews seven days a week in the jails' alternative work and release and work, direct work programs, where the facility approximately 1,698 community worker, work crews annually resulting in over 91,400 community service hours throughout the county. And that our correction service officers provide youth with guidance, hope, and a new focus while assisting with community re-entry and life outside of corrections. And what a huge, important role these officers are for getting our youth back on track and making sure there isn't recidivism and making sure that they're fulfilling their life the way that they want to, not what they thought it should be. It's having those positive mentors in our life. And I wanted to hit this even more so at this meeting with the COVID-19. We are on week nine, and the stresses that happen in the families and what's going on, and we want to make sure that people are not forgotten and that we are celebrating the great work that everyone is doing. And so today is my opportunity and our board's opportunity to say thank you to all of those CSOs. So really, thank you. Board members, before I come down to present this resolution, does any, have any other comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yes, I would have to thank Mark Varela and all the CSO's officers for their excellent work they do on an everyday basis, you know, helping our families and helping our children here in Ventura County. Also, I want to share that, I didn't hear Mr. Varela share with them that I'm sure they're still working with the Oxnard Portland Aimee Boys and Girls Club that's been very instrumental for many, many years in working with the probation CSO officers. So again, Mark and your staff, thank you for your excellent work, and especially right now with the COVID-19 pandemic that we have now. Thank you again for your excellent work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Any other supervisors? I would like to say this is a great opportunity for showcasing to our community what probation does and what the case officers do on a daily basis, so thank you.
Thank you.
This is Bob Huber, can you hear me?
Yes, Supervisor Huber, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I, as a former deputy district attorney, I worked very closely with correctional officers, and I just want to say they do a hard, hard work, dedicated work, and we're very blessed to have them here in this county. And I wish them all well during this National Correctional Officers Week.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Any other supervisors?
Supervisor Parks here too, and just also want to express my appreciation. It's a tough job anytime, but particularly now with COVID. And so really, respect the additional stress that our officers have, our probation officers have, and then also the need to ensure the safety of our, of the community too. So I just really appreciate the additional harder work that you are doing. And as always, it's not just this week, but we celebrate our employees year-round. You all do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you. Mr. Powers?
Supervisor Long, this is Steve Bennett. I think it's ironic that the agency that seems to be off the radar screen relative to how much they contribute has to have their one recognition week when we're in COVID and we're not there. So it's certainly not, it's certainly in some ways is symbolic of what happens with probation, which is you guys do a great job and you're not as much on the radar screen and not as easily recognized as some of the other public safety agencies. But I want you to know, we consistently, at the board supervisor's level, really appreciate what you're doing and recognize it. So I'm glad we have this opportunity. I wish it was with a full board room and with all supervisors there. Keep up the good work, everybody at probation. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you. Mr. Powers?
Just thank you, you know, the work that probation officers do day in and day out, as mentioned before, you're turning lives around. And the chief's told me before, very often, many of these juveniles and youth, this is the only positive adult role model these kids have in their lives. And so the path you're putting them on helps them and our whole community, so just great, great, thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to hand this, and we're going to stand in a way that we look like we're in the picture but six feet apart. Just if we could space out so that we're. I appreciate that, thank you. Yes. No, it's because I care about you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you very much, board members, for letting me bring that to your attention. The next item we have is going to be our consent agenda, item number 12. Do we have any questions or concerns from our board members on this item? If not, I need a motion to approve.
Huber, move approval.
Second Zaragoza.
It's been first by Supervisor Huber and second by Supervisor Zaragoza. Any further discussions? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, so that motion is approved for consent item 12. 13 was removed. Next item is our public comments, and I believe we're going to have one of our clerk of the boards reading our public comments.
Good morning, Chair Long, board members and CEO Powers. My name is Mia Martinez, I am the Assistant Chief Deputy Clerk of the Board, and I'm here to read a public comment received after 5:00 PM. First comment is from Louise Lampara, and it says, "In times of crisis, government must rely on public trust and cooperation. Trust and cooperation are only achieved through government commitment to absolute transparency and robust public engagement. The public comment process at these hearings currently lack both. One, the clerk restics public comment to both be read, allowed, less than 250 words. Previously, we were allowed five minutes for general public comment before the board. Further, the county allowed up to three minutes for verbal comments and 250 words equal to 45 seconds of verbal testimony. Restricting comments to 45 seconds muzzles the public. It is not a substitute for public comment procedures the county has removed. Oxnard Camarillo, TO, Santa Barbara County, and other Ventura County departments allow phone or video public comments. Only the board hearings fail to offer any direct public comment processes. And three, the county instructs for public comment. Do not clearly outline how to submit comment to be read aloud, nor does the county provide any assurance that the clerk will read any comment aloud. The public demands a transparent process for engagement and comment. While the governor modified some portions of the Brown Act to ensure public safety, he did not reduce any requirements for public comment and engagement. COLAB has submitted more detailed comments to the record. We hope that the board and the CEO will consider our suggestions to improve the public comment process to ensure public access to policymaking has not been closed off."
Thank you very much for your comment, Louise, and we'll bring this to the county council to review this, these comments. Thank you.
The next public comment is from Marilyn Marmey, and it reads, "I'm frankly horrified at the reluctance of the board of supervisors to take the necessary steps to end the shutdown, which is devastating to economic health in our county. The longer this goes on, the longer it will take to recover, if ever. Please show some courage and quit using the governor's mandates as your excuse. I was so disappointed to hear Dr. Levin mention that there are some people who are, and quote, "into constitutional rights," and quote, "as though, as some strange hobby or cult. The board of supervisors and all governmental workers should always be into constitutional rights. Please show us you are leaders and not followers and give us our freedom. Open Ventura County ASAP."
Thank you for your comments.
The next public comment is from Jennifer McCarthy, and it reads, "Dear Ventura County Supervisors, for eight weeks I've stayed home from working, waiting to be able to earn a living and to do a job for which I am paid to do. I work for church, so I'm not only able to work, but the religious liberties that our parishioners are being violated as well. Yes, we can watch mass on the computer, but that doesn't give us the opportunity for fellowship and service in our community that are also a close part of our religious celebrations. And since I am Catholic, the most important part of our faith is missing. I cannot, that cannot be recreated at home. We are unable to receive the Eucharist. Not only are First Amendment rights of the citizens being violated, but our rights of our property, my husband and son are both small business owners. Because of the lockdown, their businesses are suffering great financial setbacks which may never be able to meet up. They both have employees who are counting on them, not to mention the financial devastation of our family and the business go under. We were to lose everything. These businesses represent a lifetime of hard work, dedication, financial risk. The government should not be able to viciously take away from us without due process. Please, for the sake of the constitutional rights, you must allow businesses, churches, parks, and beaches to open back up. The people cannot expect to stay at home much longer."
Thank you for your comments, Jennifer.
And lastly, there's another comment from William Wirick that reads, "Yesterday was told that large corporate big-box retailers like Target were allowed to have in-store clothing sales while small business clothing stores were still restricted to curbside delivery. I found this hard to believe, but confirmed it personally last evening. From a managed risk perspective, is the county of Ventura telling small businesses that it is a greater risk for them to have in-store clothing sales in Target or Costco with the same or greater distancing and other safety protocols? Does also selling food somehow magically mean that lower risk inside the big-box retailers with inherent greater crowd intensity? How can small business owners avoid the conclusion that the Ventura County is discriminating against them in favor of large corporate retailers?"
Thank you, William, for your comments. I appreciate everyone's submission of their public comments. We have had many that were put already into the agenda and were passed out to all of our board members for us to read before this meeting and for the public to have access to. Thank you very much, and congratulations for being part of the clerk of the board team.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. We have a new hire. All right, next item is our COVID-19, and I, first of all, would like to set the tone in which we do not take the decisions of this board does for COVID-19 lightly. And I understand that all of the board members are not here today, and I know all of them would like to be here today to be in the room and make sure that we're having all the discussions we need to. But I want to also make sure that people know that just because they're not in this room doesn't mean we're not having the difficult conversations. We are doing that every single day, whether it's the weekend or 8 o'clock at night. There are people in our departments and our staff, our board members, that are working nonstop to make sure the safety of our community. I spoke about it yesterday at the press release, and that economy for Ventura County is extremely important for the health of our community, and the health of our community is extremely important to be driving our economy. They both play a very strong part in this, and we, I just personally want to say, my condolences to everyone who is going through hardship during this time, who has lost a loved one, who has lost a job, or is so many other things. But I want to stress that at week nine, we all in this county have been working with our cities, our state representatives and departments, our federal, to ensure that we are doing the steps we need to do for our community. Now, I know that many of us would say we're not doing enough, or many of us might say we're doing too much, but we're really trying to strike a balance here for Ventura County, and I want to state, thank you very much for all the comments that people are providing to us through social media, through our press conferences, through our public comment in our board meetings. We are getting all emails, and this, what you're doing is helping us to drive the momentum and to make sure that we're making the decisions that we need to make for our community. So we appreciate the input and working together with all of you, because it's not just the board here that is making the COVID-19 decrease, it's all of you out there that are keeping the social distance, making sure that we have safe places to work, making sure that our kids are distance learning, that our nurses are able, and doctors are able to take care of our sick. There are so many things here, and I wanted to set that tone because we're going to have some very good conversations today, and I want to make sure that you know that as a public. And I want to make sure that you know that as a public, we are listening to you, and we are trying to do our best for the safety of the community and for getting our economy back up and going. I personally would really appreciate our economy to go up, and I know that our board members all agree on that. I know that our state agrees, and so is federal, is hitting that balance so that we can do this safely so we don't have a surge of COVID-19. And we all can agree or disagree on the ways we do it. But today, we have our special meeting for the COVID-19, and I'd like to pass it over to Mr. Mike Powers. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Long, board members, to our Ventura County community. So because of the great work of our community, our individuals and businesses, and the sacrifices they've made complying with the Stay Well orders, we are in a position to move forward, and we made big progress late last week with the governor's announcement of moving into Phase Two, Stage Two, which allows the reopening of retail at curbside as well as manufacturing and supply chain that supports retail. And important to note, too, that that's the examples we're getting, clothing stores, sporting goods stores, bookstores, and toy stores. But those are just examples, because really, this is all retail. We want to make sure that was clear. And we saw an immediate impact of that. Of course, the florists had a big day with Mother's Day. I talked to one florist who she has a small shop, but she had 11 trucks out there delivering on Saturday, Mother's Day. So we did see some immediate impact of that. The new health order, at the same time in order to move forward, Dr. Levin adjusted his local order here to align more with the governor's order. That will bring greater clarity for businesses, and it seems to have done that, and more focus on high-risk versus low-risk instead of essential versus nonessential. And we can move gradually through the governor's stages from low-risk on up. And it's important to note that because not every county is moving forward with the governor's Stage Two plan. For example, the Bay Area counties are not moving forward really at all with it. And so it's because of the great work of this community and the business community, keeping our numbers low, that is allowing us to move forward. The other thing that we put in place, of course, is the registration site so that businesses can sign up and reopen and attest to the points that the state's requiring in posting plans and physical distancing. And that was set up as well and as a program for sort of consultative check-ins with the businesses to just see how they're doing with complying with the physical distancing protocols, more of an ambassador-type approach, positive reinforcing and sharing of best practices from one business to the other. And so one of the things we wanted to emphasize as well is that businesses don't need to get inspected to reopen, and they just need to register. And that seems to have helped, and so folks are registering. And I had a reporter ask me, do you think, like on Friday, that many people would, businesses would sign up? And I said, well, I never doubt the drive and the passion and the innovativeness of our local business leaders. And sure enough, since Friday, we've had 525 businesses register to reopen and have done so. So it's progress. As the supervisor said, there's more to come, more to do, to be sure, but it is a significant step forward. We also know that there's a lot of impacts continuing even with these changes to our local businesses, like mom-and-pop stores, you know, trying to compete with big-box stores and online retailers like Amazon. And that's a tough situation to be in, and I just wanted you to note that. And other local businesses like restaurants and offices and so forth that are scheduled for Stage Two, we have been in discussions with the state and sharing those concerns so that they understand what our local businesses are facing here locally. And so part of the very good discussions, and we'll see more from the governor this week and maybe even today, some more announcements. And I also just want to recognize that the spirit that the businesses are coming to us with, and it's with a spirit of compliance and caring about the welfare of their workers and the employees. And they get it. They want to comply with the letter, but also the spirit of physical distancing requirements. And they're coming up with great ways of doing it. And so one of the things I want to continue to encourage our local businesses is to work on preparation, even if they're not open yet, get prepared for when your time does come, and you can reopen and have those plans in place. And the governor's website does have industry sector guidelines on them, more to come. But I think it's also great, and we've had so many businesses in industry sector to us with best practice protocols for ensuring physical distancing in the workplace. And so just the more we can get ready and advance the better, we can hit the ground running. And two other points, and then I'll turn it over to the team here, that we need to continue to do, of course, is this depends on our continuing commitment to physical distancing going forward, to keep those numbers down. And you'll see as we move forward, the report card that the state has for us to move forward, and hospital surge capacity, PPE, the COVID-positive hospitalizations staying flat or dropping. And we'll hear more about that, but a lot of progress in all those fronts. But two other areas where we are making progress, which is on expanding testing and our tracing and follow-up team. And so those areas are going to be helpful, not just for our community's health, but for our local economy and our businesses to be able to reopen so that we have that capacity here locally. Last point before I turn it over to Rego is just on the budget piece. And of course, we've seen the governor's announcement of a $54 billion projected reduction. And of course, that's big, that can have a big impact on us locally. We'll learn more on Thursday during the May, when the governor announces his May revised budget, and we can expect significant reductions. And just wanted you to know that, of course, as we've talked about before, we are preparing here at the county level to make adjustments in light of those projected decreases. But also want you to know that the county's been putting pieces in place in terms of reserves and just our programs here in order to sustain our critical core services during this very challenging time when our community is going to need it the most. And so at the end of the presentation, I'll review those points and talk a little bit more about where we stand on our budget. So with that, yes?
Mr. Powers, I would like to hit quickly on the Phase Two businesses. I wanted to reassure that we have our Stage Two, which are low-risk sectors, and the criteria and those that you, excuse me, got tongue-tied, so many things I want to say right now. If you go to covid.covid19.ca.gov, you can see the list of industries and what businesses are open. And I want to reassure those that are watching today, we are not stopping there to say that those are the only businesses that we want reopened. We're advocating with the state to make sure they understand the businesses in our community, what they are advocating for, and sharing the best practices there. And we are also asking them to log in there and tell the governor of the state what practices are the best practices, because I think we can learn from each other, and we can make sure that our businesses are safely run and can be operable. And it's the commitment of this county to do that that we can open so much more. And we're advocating to do that right now. And I really wanted to say thank you to Dr. Levin for listening to our businesses and our community. I know we're trying to get the parks reopened with parking and bathrooms. We're trying to get the state beaches open with parking and bathrooms, but we're not there yet. And so advocating and showing the safety is extremely important so that we can, on all levels, be working together for the safety of the community. So I wanted to make sure people know that we are strongly advocating for more, and we have to work together for that. I just can't hit that more. So I apologize, but I needed to drive that statement. There's too many emails to all of us that are saying that we're not doing enough, and I really need to make sure we don't talk about it as much as we're on the calls to the state and to all the different departments as to what we can do to move forward. So with that, Rego.
Madam Chair, go ahead. Hello?
Yes, Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yeah, I also like to make some comments on that. I received a lot of emails from our residents, you know, that are really anxious to open businesses and et cetera here in Ventura County. But I also want to commend Dr. Levin, you know, for following what I believe is important, to keep our constituency safe and our children and parents and so forth. And to open or do not follow the governor's guidelines and others, I think it's really important to all of us that we keep this COVID-19 to a minimum. And as you probably heard on the news that some of the countries that opened up were too early and now having a resurgence in the COVID-19, which I think that we should learn from. But I believe that we're doing the right thing, and I just have our residents and our businesses kind of, you know, slowed down a little bit, and I think in the next couple of weeks that we'll probably open up with more of a safety-type issues and as opposed to that open just randomly and nearly willingly for that matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Zaragoza. Supervisor Bennett? Yes, please.
Yeah, Supervisor Long. Steve, I know once one of us breaks in, then we all break in. Very quickly, I just want to point out two things. One, Mr. Powers talked about the fact that staff got everything ready after the governor's order. I just want to point out to the public, since this might be the first time a lot of people have heard this, but our staff worked late into the night on Thursday night because the governor issued this order on Thursday. In the middle of the day, we had to set up a website, staff had to set up a website and do all kinds of complicated and technical things to be ready for businesses to sign up. And there we were, by 9:00 the next morning, we had dozens of businesses already signed up. And so we didn't, we had another example of staff, I think, earning the public's trust by their hard, hard work Thursday night, a whole team staying late, trying to make sure that we had everything set up for businesses to open up less than 24 hours after the governor issued his change. The only other thing I want to mention since we're on this and we had the letter about retail businesses and trying to compete with the big-box stores is I know there is at least out there a consideration and a possibility of allowing retail businesses to let, like, just one customer a time into the store to make it more convenient. And I've been really impressed with businesses cooperating with those kind of rules and regulations. So I know that's at least something being considered. And for small businesses listening, I just want to let them know those are the kind of things that are constantly being talked about and stuff. So I wanted to point out those two things. Thank you very much. And thanks again to staff for that incredible work last Thursday night.
Thank you. Good points. Supervisor Parks, I heard you want to speak as well? I heard your voice.
I'm good. Thank you. I can rock after the presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Powers?
Two things back on beaches. One, just to let folks know, our understanding is LA County beaches are going to reopen soon. I think that will have a helpful impact here, and we'll continue to look at, you know, the focus on active renovation as we go forward and maybe, you know, if things improve and other beaches open up, maybe relaxing that as well. Wanted to go back to the stages of reopening here. And as you can see, that Business Verification Ambassador Program, that was very key to enabling us to move forward. And wanted to have Kim Pearlheart, our RMA Director, come and talk about the work she and her team have done to put this program in place. And just to note, too, that this is important for Stage Two reopening, but actually for all of the stages as we reopen. Having this capacity, this team in place of county and city staff to verify and consult will help us through all of our stages of reopening, and I appreciate Kim and her team jumping on this so quickly. Kim?
Good morning, Chair Long and CEO Powers and members of the board. Kim Pearlheart, the Resource Management Agency Director. I just want to, can we go to the next slide, Lori, or do I have them?
There you go. Ask and you shall receive.
This is the Stage Two business reopening plan that we have. As Mr. Powers said, we were able to set this up very quickly. It is on VCC, www.vcreopens.com. So you go and you do this adestation for these points. The site itself is very simple. It takes minutes to do. I think it has links to all of the state guidelines, and it's just important for businesses out there to think about how they can operate their businesses safely. And so we ask them to go to the state, look at the guidance. The state's put together a nice set of guidance. They're not too long, four or five pages for each business or an industry type, and they put a nice checklist on the end just to make sure that you're capturing everything. So we're asking our businesses to take a look at the physical distancing guidance for all things, like limiting the number of individuals riding in elevators if you have a large business, to stagger employee breaks, to really look to see what's happening in the break room and see if there's an outdoor facility that you could use instead of an indoor facility, to encourage social distance meetings like this meeting that we're having today and not in-person meetings, to utilize telenetwork offices and schedules. So there's all sorts of good ideas in there that will work for your business if it's small or if it's big. And we're asking you to choose those, take a look at what you're doing now, and apply a business plan, a COVID-19 prevention plan for the safety of your employees and your business and your customers. And if you have a smaller-type business or haven't done that before, I know the EDC has worked and Paul Stamper has worked to put together on this site samples that you can use and you can fill in, and that can be the sample form that our ambassadors will look when we're out in the business. And for those bigger industries like Target and Walmart, right, they already have these plans in place. And so we're not asking them to do a new plan. We're asking them to go to the guidelines and make sure that they're in compliance with all of that. It's a great website. It's easy to use, and that's the goal. We really wanted to make things easy for our business community. Oh, so I went the wrong way. Whoops. Lori, you're going to have to help me. Here we are. So this is what it looks like when you go in. It tells you what stage that you're in. It asks you to look at the guidelines. It, and then it goes through. What we noticed when we first stood it up very quickly is some businesses registered that weren't allowed in this early Stage Two. So then we asked those businesses, we say, if you're going to mark, like, for instance, dog grooming, you're not allowed in this phase, but we do want you to get prepared. So we want you to read all the guidance that's available to you, but not register right now, because we are sending our folks out to these sites that are only registered. You go through the workplace type, the adestation, you go through the seven questions, and then it gives you an email, a confirmation email. And then this is what we have done to train our county and our city folks that are going out. There's an Esri website that is an app for your phone, so you load it on your phone. It takes about two minutes. I've done it myself. You register, and then you go in, and the city and the county staff can see all of the businesses that registered in these blue dots. It's very simple. The cities were really appreciative of the simpleness of this program because you just go in, you can click on one of those dots. It comes up with the industry, what the name of the business is, who to talk to, what their phone number is. And then you can go out there, you can verify with them their prevention plan, and then it changes the color so you know that it goes from blue to, what's the color, Patrick? Blue to green. So green is good to go. Red is if we need to go back and revisit. So we might find a couple of things that saying, hey, it would be better if you did this, or did you try this? Another industry of the same type is moving in this direction. And so we would go back out the next day or the day after to revisit them. So we do want the businesses to know, and the city staff wants the businesses to know, you know, we're here to help them. We're helping to guide them through this process. It's new for everyone. And so we wanted to make it as nice and easy as possible for them, but we do want to do the verification. I know that's important to Dr. Levin, and so we will be out verifying that all of these sites are in compliance with their individual prevention plans.
How long do you think it takes for that process to fill out the paperwork?
Well, if you already have a plan, right, so we're asking those to register that have been open before in this first 10 days. So if you already have a plan, that will be simple. If your business is small and only a couple of people, right, you can use the form that's already out there, and that will also be simple. If you already have a plan, if you're a bigger business and you've been operating, just to fill out what is needed on that form is less than five minutes.
Great. And I wanted to make sure people knew that sometimes new things are a little bit scary and they'll put them off. And so I want to make sure that it is an easy process for our businesses to do. And so you're advocating also for those that are waiting to open to actually go online and get all the things ready.
Yeah, we are absolutely, yeah, to get things ready, to give us a call if you have any questions. We still like to hear from people. We've heard from about 250 since this website was put up. And so we like to hear from people. It's great to know that they have questions. Covidcompliance@ventura.org is still where we take it, and the phone calls is 805-5202-1805. We're here to answer any of the questions. If questions go to the cities, we are working with the cities to take those calls. And right now, we're working with OES to stand up a phone tree that will more easily deliver those calls directly to the cities.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to make the, I want to reiterate the point that Mr. Powers made, too. I just want to make the, I want to reiterate the point that Mr. Powers made too, is you do not have to be inspected to operate. You know, we're hoping all our businesses register and begin operating and then we will be out hopefully in the next few days.
And I know that our office has contacted your, your office to help with businesses and questions as to whether they're following the rules or not. And I appreciate how quickly you were there to get it done through a phone call or an email. You know, I really appreciate that because our businesses are really wanting to get going. And the quicker we are to respond, the quicker they can get going.
Absolutely.
So the information they can also go to is reopens, but also vcemergency.com in the business section. So if they have coding, coding compliance issues or anything, there's the number there that they can go to.
Absolutely. And then the number still, the phone number for the COVID compliance issue is 805-202-1805.
Okay. Thank you. Because I know I just got a email about the golf courses and can they use one golf course and can they use the chipping and putting? So I'm urging those that want that to go to the code compliance and to get the answers there.
Right. And that's a good point because we do take up all those calls and there's been thousands to date, right? We take up all of those calls and put them in a in a spreadsheet. And so when we have those conversations about the next phase and the phase after, we're already ahead of those questions. So we do appreciate the public and businesses calling into that line.
Thank you. Supervisors, do you have any questions for Kim? In hearing none. Thank you. Mr. Powers, back to you.
Report card. These are the six areas that the governor is wants us to look at and make sure we're meeting these requirements so that we can continue to move forward safely in our county. Dr. Levin.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors. Mr. Powers, I wanted to to talk about really one major thing. And that is the, there's a number of disparate ideas out there around the movement of our county through the process of reopening. And it's kind of hard sometimes to see how they piece together, how they're going to come together and work for us. Some of those ideas are phase two. Sometimes these are just words. There's also accelerated phase two. There's what goals do we have to achieve in terms of numbers? How much more testing do we have to do? And why do we have to do more testing? What about this lack of swabs we've been hearing about and how have they been holding us back? Is there an actual concrete goal we have to achieve with the limited but not concrete opening for businesses? But I'm sorry, but concrete opening for businesses? What steps are we taking to decrease our cases of COVID-19? Or are we just going to trust that they'll go down by themselves? And these are all things that I think people wonder about and I get asked about from time to time. One of the goals that I want to accomplish before I feel we can enter accelerated phase two is to bring our COVID numbers down. Using the standards the governor has set, we'll have to get down to six new cases a day on the average over two weeks. Right now, we're roughly at 15 to 20 cases a day. These are newly diagnosed cases. And that number is only going to go up unless I'm sorry mistaken as we do more and more testing. And we will be doing more and more testing. So it's not surprising that we would find more cases. How much more testing do we have to do? We're already starting to see an upward trend in the number of our tests. Up until last week, we were doing about 250 to 300 tests per day. Then last week, we had a day where we did over 600 tests. And yesterday, we performed over 500 tests. By my interpretation of the governor's numbers, we are expected to get up to 1,300 tests per day if we're going to advance from our phase two to our accelerated phase two. And we've been held back by a lack of swabs to put in a person's nose to collect the specimen. We've been held back by the physicians in our county who have been getting mixed messages. On the one hand, they hear that we need to identify patients with COVID-19. But on the other hand, they've been hearing that we don't have the testing capability in our county for them to be able to accomplish this. And then there's the public who have been led to believe that they couldn't get tested even if they wanted to, especially if they were young or had no chronic conditions or weren't very sick. Meanwhile, every one of those untested patients that in actuality had undocumented COVID was continuing to have contact with others and spreading the disease. One case would lead to two, two cases would lead to four or five. And these cases might lead to 12 other cases. And this would be all a law, all in the period of 18 days. You could go from one to 18, one to 12 cases. But this must be the exception, some of you think. I'm sorry to tell you that that's the rule. There are surely more undiagnosed cases in our county than there are diagnosed cases. Your actions at quarantine and social distancing is what is holding this at bay. And our increasing capacity to test is counterbalancing this trend. So we're holding right now in a steady state. How do I know this? We're not doing enough testing. So how can I be so sure? I focus on one number, and that's the number of people with COVID-19 who are hospitalized now in our county's eight hospitals. That number again is the number of patients with COVID-19 hospitalized in our county's hospitals. That number has been steady between roughly 26 and 30 hospitalized COVID patients over the last several weeks. And this is the truest number we can lash our hopes to. This number tells us more about the true state of COVID in our county than any other. There are 850,000 people out there in our county. Some of them we know have COVID-19 because they've been diagnosed. Others, probably many more, we don't know have COVID and are walking around out there to the store or to their essential business occupation. Many are feelings are feeling no symptoms at all or mild symptoms. But whether they are diagnosed with COVID or not, they have the potential to become sick and sick enough to require hospitalization. Many of the COVID patients in our hospitals were not diagnosed before they came to our emergency room. So that's why this number of hospitalized COVID patients is so important because it reflects the true amount of COVID out there in our community. What's been keeping us from bringing this critical number down? A simple thing like a lack of swabs. But now we have enough swabs. We have enough swabs. We have enough nurses in the county to perform the specimen collection. We have enough laboratory capacity to run the tests. We have or are close to having enough teams of nurses and contact tracers to follow up on diagnosed cases and their close contacts and expect them to stay at home for a short two weeks while they lose their contagiousness and can no longer spread the disease to others. Finding and isolating a case decreases the number of people he or she can infect. Finding and isolating a contact prevents entirely that person from infecting others. So with this new expanded program of testing more to find more cases and taking steps to prevent cases and contacts from spreading the virus will decrease the number of us who are transmitting this virus. And this will inevitably lead, and I don't mean in a year, I mean in weeks. This will inevitably lead to fewer people in our county sick enough to require hospitalization. And that will bring down the number of people hospitalized with COVID-19 in our county. It will fall from between 26 and 30 now down to 15, perhaps 10 or less in our county. That will certainly be enough, I think, to qualify us to move on to an accelerated phase two. There will be fewer hospitalized COVID cases in our county because there will be less COVID in our county. We'll accomplish more testing by notifying the providers, the doctors in our county, that we now have enough testing material by encouraging them to test anyone with any symptoms that concern them of any age with or without chronic diseases. By encouraging the residents, you, the residents of our county, that they should ask their doctor to test them for COVID and that they have the right to do so if they have symptoms. And if their physician still would rather not do so, the patient can make an appointment at one of the two state sites that have been established in our county and get tested without a doctor's lab request. Also, you can ask your doctor to test either in person or you can tell your doctor your symptoms over the phone and ask that he or she arrange testing. And with this expanded testing of 1,300 a day, we'll see an increase in diagnosed cases at first, an increase. But after this expanded program has taken effect, we will see the number of new cases each day begin to fall as well. And before long, we should achieve our goal of six or fewer newly diagnosed cases in our county. And all of this will be because of the efforts of the residents of our county, of you. You will have been the ones to comply with public health guidelines. You will have been the ones to help or urge others to comply. You will be the ones to recognize the importance of this joint mission we are on. You will have been the ones who have suffered emotionally and financially. But at the same time, you'll have been the ones to cheer up others, be generous with your time and possessions, and to have kept your positive attitudes. So I thank you all very much for the roles you've played in fighting this common enemy. I also want to mention that constitutional rights, it was mentioned in one of the the letters that were read, constitutional rights are critical for all of us. These guarantees assure our freedom. Some see constitutional concerns in some issues where others do not. For some, tracking contacts of cases of COVID by cell phone location is a constitutional infringement. And I can see that perspective. But to others, it's an obvious necessity to control a dangerous disease. And I'm sensitive to both sides of this issue. Those are my comments. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Supervisors, I will open it up first to all of you that are patiently on Zoom. Any supervisors like to ask a question?
This is Bobby.
Yes, Supervisor Huber.
Yes, I just have a comment here if I might. I certainly believe the orders of May 7th and the state's stage two is a marked improvement. I'm glad we can allow more businesses to operate and attempt to stay afloat and save their businesses. I'm especially glad to see your efforts to protect residents at long term care facilities. You have pioneered this effort to ensure that infected patients at these facilities are able to receive heightened care at hospitals and protect the employees and other patients at long term care facilities. As we look across the country, upwards of 40 to 50% of COVID deaths are attributed to deaths at long term care facilities. Your, you innovated effort will protect Ventura County residents. I'm glad to see that the ropes and tape are gone from stores that are already open. This will help keep Ventura County residents from higher risk areas. Even with improved orders, there's always room for improvement. And there are a few places I would like you and the county to look to make changes. I'm pleased that we are leaving our beaches open for active use. However, it is just wrong to close beach parking. I understand the need to prevent overcrowding, but we can open even half of the spaces for beach parking. That will alleviate the parking issues at residential areas near beaches. And quite importantly, will allow residents with disabilities have better access to the beaches. Additionally, I find it inhumane to keep the bathrooms at beaches closed. What is a person to do when they need to use a restroom, especially when when parking is further away? There is no reason to be cruel. Let's open beach restrooms. I understand the desire to follow the orders of the governor. However, I firmly believe that one size fits all effort is not the appropriate way for this diverse state and is not the appropriate even appropriate even for our diverse county. First and foremost, we need the county to keep, to need to protect the well being of Ventura County residents in short term, long term, in the short and long term. And I appreciate your hard work and and continue the dedicated work. Thank you.
Thanks Supervisor. We are looking at all these issues constantly. Things are changing constantly. I wouldn't be surprised if we hear a change or two in the governor's comments today. We can't go beyond liberalize the governor's restrictions. We can be more conservative and in some small, tiny, limited areas we have been. But we are doing our best to comply with with the governor's limitations.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Thank you Supervisor Huber for those comments. I just totally hear what you're saying. And just two, two points real quick. One, as as you know, several counties, including LA, kept their beaches closed for a long time. And so we've strived to keep ours open because we know it's important for people to get exercise, get fresh air, and it's good for their physical and mental health. And so we've been able to do that partly with some of the the mitigation measures you've mentioned. I can tell you that we were speaking as recently as yesterday with our safety leadership and Parks leadership on the very issues we're discussing as as we move forward, looking forward to gradually relaxing those rules and allowing more more parking and activities at the beach. So more to come on that. We'll, we'll continue to evaluate as we go.
On the beaches, also the consideration because we are working with the state and with the cities as to these rules and regulations. We want to make sure we're working uniformly so that one beach doesn't get more than another.
Yes, thank you Chair Long. That's exactly right. We have been coordinating every week with police chiefs of all three coastal cities, Port One, Nimi, Oxnard, and Ventura, as well as the sheriff, as well as city, county, and state parks so that we're all on the same page and sending the same message to the community.
Correct. Can I, first of all, before I get more questions for myself, Supervisors, are there any other questions?
Another question. I just want to say thank you to Mike and Dr. Levin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I had questions in regards to the phase two with the governor's items. And his data is coming from our public health directors, correct, for for the indicators or parameters, the public?
The.
Dr. Galley and.
The information that's coming to the governor is coming from the counties?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. And apologize. I have so many questions I want to ask at one time. With the phase two governor's plan for required parameters and accelerations, they were talking about a certain amount of deaths per capita. And that's a hard one to hit based on our size, to me personally. And I want, I appreciated your comment in regards to focusing on how many are in our hospitals. Because I, my understanding with all of this was stage one was to get our surge capacity so that we could handle the hospitals and those in them. So if we focus on our number of those in the hospital, that aligns with the phase one versus the deaths. Am I, am I accurate in saying that? Are there some correlation to that? And maybe you can come back with at a different time with more information. But those are questions that I did have. Go ahead, Mr. Powers.
Thank you so much Chair Long. Yeah, to that point of the moving into phase two, accelerated phase two, the governor has laid out 12 readiness criteria. And we're going to review those with your board and and see how we stack up. We do meet most of them. There are a couple that are really out of reach for counties of any size like Ventura County or others. And so we're going to explain that to you, walk you through that. And and we have been in discussions with the state over those very measures.
Great. And then the other question I had is you stated that we thank you to the governor and the the state departments for giving us or providing two test sites so that people can't get tested. So our numbers for testing. So our numbers for testing will, like you stated, go up, but is that a measure of how much COVID is out in our county or not, because we'll never get to a hundred percent tested? You can take averages, maybe? I was trying to get understanding of methodology as to the significance of making sure everyone is tested versus the significance of measuring those in a hospital?
At this point, it's hard to imagine everyone in the county being tested. On the other hand, it's not hard to imagine everyone who has symptoms to be tested. That's our goal. And so now with an increased testing capability, I expect to see many more people tested, and that will lead to us taking more and more people out of the common mix that are contagious, and that will lead, as the next step, to decrease numbers in the hospital, decrease numbers of new cases every day.
So it's a preventative, for example, I start getting headaches or I lose taste in my mouth, I can go to one of these test sites and get tested. I might not have a fever, but I could still go get tested.
Absolutely. You can call your provider, and they can tell you where to go, set you up, or you can just go to one of these two state sites. We don't have a vaccine, we don't have medications, we have these primitive methods, old-fashioned methods of controlling this, which is quarantine and isolation, but they work, but they're slower to respond than either a medication or an immunization.
Okay, and I've been on many of the state calls and the regional calls and appreciate your information. I want the community to know also the swabs has been a huge issue, like you stated, right? And so we're able to now test more because we have those swabs?
Yes.
Okay. And then I wondered if you could talk about the tracing. I think I see someone in the audience that might be able to, are we going there later? Oh, okay, great. You're reading my mind already. So we will talk about the process of what happens if you do get tested positive in your household and so forth. Great, so more to come on that.
Very good.
Supervisor Long, Steve Bennett.
Supervisor Bennett.
A question for a combination of Dr. Levin and Leroy. With regard to the order, I've had some people ask me, and I realized I wasn't that clear. Where are we with hotels and motel rooms? Are hotels open? Are they open only for essential visitors? Can somebody, between the two of you, can you guys explain that to me? Thank you.
Sure, Supervisor Bennett, this is Michael Walker, sitting in for Leroy today. Dr. Levin's orders from the outset have allowed hotels and motels and similar enterprises to operate, and he has changed nothing in his orders in that regard. So within the county, they may continue operating as they were from the beginning of his orders.
And from the beginning of the order, did it, it didn't restrict, it didn't say, it just was silent, it didn't say they only could have guests that are doing essential business or anything?
That is correct. It was express in saying that hotels and motels could be open. It did not limit the types of guests who could stay there.
Thank you.
That's a very good point, Supervisor Bennett. There was also some questions in regard to the dental, our dentists and so forth. They've gotten a couple of questions, so if we can make sure that's clarified, appreciate it, just so that they know.
I am, it's my feeling, but I want to defer to the state, and I haven't heard back from the state, but it's my feeling that elective procedures should still not be allowed to be done. I have concern about the dental hygienists. A lot of the procedures they do create aerosols. This is dangerous for, if there's a COVID patient that they're working on and they don't know they're COVID positive, this is dangerous for the hygienist, it's dangerous for everyone in the office, it's dangerous for the people in the waiting room. So at this point, I'm not ready to go there, but I've asked the state and see if they have a more enlightened view than do I.
Thank you very much, and I know you've, we've talked so much about the retail stores, the local stores, being able to have people go into the store, like the big box stores. We've looked at the dog groomers, we're looking at the hairdressers, you have to go to the state on certain requirements for that as well. We've looking at RV park opening, we've heard that conversation from the community, the golf courses, we've even had the kids' sports been brought up and so forth. So I say that only to make sure that people know that those are conversations that we're having, and that you are talking with the state and so forth with that as well. Did I miss any?
Oh, no, very comprehensive, thank you, Chair Long. What I would say, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, we're looking at those things, but we've also already decided on some of those things. We've taken down those areas that were barriered, if that's a word, off in the big box stores. So now the entire store is open.
Okay, thank you. And I laughed just a second ago because I know I ask a lot of questions, not just at this board meeting, but amongst all of you, so I know you've heard us, along with all the rest of our board members, too.
Well, these are very helpful because they help us clarify our thinking, so thank you for your questions.
Thank you. And supervisors, anything else? Mr. Powers?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yeah, one last question, and I keep getting this question over and over again on the hairdressing. When do you think that's going to be open, you know, for our young ladies and our ladies to get their hairs combed and so forth? When do you think that's going to happen, Dr. Levin?
Isn't that in phase three? That's my understanding, yes.
Yes.
In phase three, okay.
However, we're anxious.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Long. What I would say, too, is, you know, the points that you've just raised are exactly the points we're hearing from our business leaders in our communities, and we do have regular meetings with the chambers, with EDC, workforce development, and so forth, so we can get that feedback, and our cities, both the city manager offices and council members, we're hearing those issues and we're distilling them down into key points and sharing those with the state and having those discussions regularly, I can assure you. Thank you.
Can I ask a pointed question? So some of, some community members are asking why we have to follow the state. Is that something, who would like to hit that one?
I'll go ahead and address that.
That's great. Johnny, please.
Chair Long, and that's because under the emergency orders, the governor's law is supreme within the state, and the county serves as a political subdivision of the state, and so therefore, we are required to comply with the governor's orders. We can be more restrictive than the governor's orders, but we cannot be less restrictive. So although I don't think Dr. Levin is necessarily in favor of opening the hair salons, he couldn't if he wanted to until the governor gives the go-ahead to do that.
And there are several counties that have decided to open up more, a couple. You always have someone that goes off and tries to do something more, but what happens?
Madam Chair. There are at least a couple of possibilities. Certainly, the governor can enforce his order with law enforcement in those counties. Another tack that you may have seen in the news is the governor will point out that those counties could be at risk of losing federal and state funding, or at least reimbursement for some of the activities that are going on right now that they otherwise might be entitled to receive.
I appreciate you stating that because I want to make sure our community knows that what we're doing is not taken lightly and that there are consequences in reach every action that we do, pros and cons, and so I need to make sure people understand these rules and regulations. So I appreciate that, and I might have to ask you to clarify that all the time so that it is fresh on people's minds, because we want to have the goodwill and collaboration with the state and the federal so that we can do the best for our county.
Thank you, Chair. And if the governor said that it was okay to open beauty parlors, I'm sure that we would be able to do that in our county as long as we were able to take steps to assure that it was done in a way that did not present a risk to customers or the people who were working in those institutions.
I was just going to say thank you, Chair Long, to Michael Walker's point, the director of the state, OES, Office of Emergency Services, said exactly what you said the other day, Michael, that counties that go beyond the governor's order risk losing that FEMA reimbursement, and I can tell you, for our county, that would be, you know, in the tens of millions of dollars that we need to support critical services here. Thank you.
Well, in case people are, yes, Supervisor Zaragoza.
My apologies. I just, before we continue, I just, I'm really happy what Michael Walker said or county consul. I think that that statement should be conveyed over and over and over again regarding us following the law, number one, and potentially losing a lot of the FEMA funding. I think people need to understand that, and I think what Michael said again, we need to convey that over and over again. So thank you for sharing that.
I think my message was clear.
Thank you, Dr. Levin.
Thank you.
Next up, I'd like to have Rigo Vargas, our public health director, come up. One of the things that your board requested last week was to see how some of our neighboring counties are looking, particularly as we're looking at regional solutions, and so Rigo is going to review the numbers in Santa Barbara and Los Angeles County.
Yes. Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, CEO Powers. I'll come back to share some of the data around the accelerated phase, stage two, but before I introduce Hannah, I did want to cover this slide. Your board asked, I believe it was the last meeting, Supervisor Parks in particular, for a comparison with our neighboring counties, and the slide before you there does that. On the first column, you have Ventura, Santa Barbara, and LA. In total cases, you see that we're at six seventy-eight compared to Santa Barbara, a little bit over thirteen hundred. Theirs includes a significant amount, I believe, over eight hundred, close to nine hundred of the inmates in the state prison in Lampoc, I believe it is. So those numbers are high for that reason, it's not all residents or community. Of course, we know LA has not only.
Excuse me, Mr. Vargas, if I may just clarify, that's a federal penitentiary in Santa Barbara, and therefore, the state has no, has had no jurisdiction within that penitentiary.
Thank you. LA has over thirty-two thousand cases, but I think I'll draw your attention in particular to the, is this a pointer? Whoops, let me go back. To the bottom, to the bottom two rows, number of, or percent of positive, is that a pointer? Yeah, thank you. There it is. So the percent positive, in terms of Ventura County, we're, as you know, we've been around five, six percent. We're actually right under five percent currently. This is, I believe, as of two days ago. Santa Barbara, because of that federal prison, has, you know, over sixty percent positive rate, and LA is around a little bit over twelve percent, and this is, these numbers are consistent with the many other counties that are in the tens, fifteens, and even low twenties in terms of their percent positive. Ventura County has always been around five, as I mentioned. The percent deaths out of, that is a number out of deaths out of all the total of positive cases, you see that ours is pretty good. I know we've lost nineteen Ventura County residents, that's very unfortunate, but our rate is just under three percent. Santa Barbara's is a little bit lower, again, because of the large prison population and the large number of total cases, but LA has a little bit closer to five percent in terms of the death rate. And so Ventura County, I think, the bottom line is that we're continuing to do well, and, you know, we're right in between two interesting counties, a very large, obviously, county to the south in LA, and, you know, they have much higher numbers, not just total population, but rates than Ventura County. And then in Santa Barbara, they're doing also fairly well, but again, it's, some of their numbers are masked or exaggerated because of the federal prison. Overall, I think, you know, in terms of the governor's looking for a regional approach to some of the accelerated reopening, and we have to keep in mind that we're right bordering in Simi Valley and Thousand Oaks to LA that has a very significant, much higher significant issue with COVID than we do, and that we're a bit more closer to our coastal counties in terms of our situation with Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo, but nevertheless, we've got to take these numbers into account as we potentially consider the accelerated stage two process. So any questions from your board on this?
Supervisors, do you have any questions?
Supervisor Parks, thank you for giving us some data on our neighboring counties. I know San Luis Obispo is having a hard time, too, but I think probably what stands out most to me, being a resident, for example, about, you know, two blocks away from Los Angeles County, is we're seeing tremendous differences between Ventura County and Los Angeles County, and I think that has some implications on how we have to look at our recovery. Westlake Village, City of Thousand Oaks, Simi Valley, they initially had the highest numbers in the county, and we see a lot of that because our residents, many of them work in Los Angeles County, but we're closer, and I just feel that it's important to keep that perspective. Ventura County is a very large county in size, you know, and west portions of Ventura County are obviously farther away from Los Angeles County and may not have the same kind of concerns, I think, as those in the east county in terms of just the, you know, being close to Los Angeles County. We're, you know, within probably thirty miles, we're seeing grocery stores where, you know, dozens of the employees have COVID. So those kind of instances can affect us because, you know, while we might have a border, a line on a map, the disease obviously doesn't know where the lines are, so I think it is really important to people in the west county to understand that the east county, I think, is, you know, has more risk involved to it, and we have to do our actions countywide. So I just want to keep that perspective, that we have to consider how close, you know, we're over twelve percent of the people are positive, and those are ones that are sick that have been tested, and that's in Los Angeles County, and the same thing in Ventura County. You know, we're testing, for the most part, people who have reasons to be tested. I think we'll see those numbers climb a lot once we start testing people without symptoms. But at any rate, I just wanted to point out, there is a big difference between counties right now, and from Ventura County's perspective, it's a good thing, because we don't want to be Los Angeles County for a couple of reasons, but a new one is, we don't want to have the kind of COVID rates that Los Angeles County has. Thank you.
Thank you.
Has any other supervisors, any other questions?
All right, thank you very much. So next is Hannah Emmonson.
I do have a question for you.
Yes.
You can't get by.
Yeah.
Sorry. I've been asked, there's many that are looking at the regional, the governor has stated having a regional approach similar to the six counties, well, not similar, but there are six counties in the northern area that have joined together for all their, the items that they're discussing, and I'm wondering, we're seeing Santa Barbara's numbers, we're seeing LA numbers, is there a benefit to joining a group like that, like upper northern California has with six? Is that something that is of interest? And I asked the board members, too, just because we are in discussions with the governor and different counties and so forth, and I'm trying to understand what the benefits are as to joining coalition with other counties as it relates to the public health of our community. I know we have our COs work together in public health. Yes?
The coalition is specific to a certain cause, is it not?
I think they, yes, standards and indicators and so forth, what they would be working with. I have been approached to discuss how urban counties hit indicators for the accelerated phase, and the interest is, our urbans are different, and so we have urbans in the northern county that are taking different. And so, we have urbans in the northern county that are taking different steps and urbans in the southern California. And then we look at our county, and I feel it's very unique because within our urban county of over 500,000 people, we have urban, suburban, and rural. So, it's, I have a hard time wrapping my hands around some of these things.
This is Steve Bennett.
Yes?
This is Steve Bennett. Yeah, the, number one, and I want to recognize what Supervisor Parks said. I realize there is a, you know, there's, you know, we're fascinating at my district border, Santa Barbara, where they never closed beaches. And we have the other border of Ventura County where Los Angeles closed the beaches and with, you know, 10 million people that could flood our direction. So, we have an interesting balancing act as we act as the whole county. And I recognize that there is, there are real concerns about being so close to Los Angeles County. That being said, I would like to raise my voice that you've said it, we're a unique county. And I am, I, on the surface, I'm not comfortable linking up with Orange County, other counties that have different, I think, different approaches and philosophies to this. So, I'm not, I'm not very interested in us being part of the urban county, you know, something that pulls in Riverside and other counties that I think may have a different philosophical bent than we have had in terms of how to proactively work on this and how to proactively work with the state, the governor. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Parks, did you have a comment? I didn't want, I wanted to make sure I didn't cut you off.
As I, as I understand the coalition, you know, it's always nice to work with your partners. But this coalition is specific to trying to get accelerated base two. And we're talking about counties such as Riverside and Orange County that have been pretty aggressive in going after Governor Newsom. But I think we need to follow what the governor's experts are showing. And then with that, being able to customize, as we have been doing. I don't like the idea of a cookie cutter, you know, of having all of us together with one message to accelerate because we are different. And quite frankly, I feel that our mission, first and foremost, has to be public health. And I don't know if others in other areas have as strong of a priority on health over economy. But I think the most important thing that we have to do is what is best for the health of our community. And I want to make sure that stays our priority and not get kind of swallowed up in a large effort to push to reopen at the expense of people's health.
Well, I do, the reason why I bring this up is because I know that our board is very sensitive in regards to COVID-19 in our community and how we open up and want to make sure that we are in control of those parameters as best we can with negotiation with the state and federal to make sure that the funding is there. We have had three years of disasters, and we really know this systems and processes well. And so, I very much trust that our community is in good hands with Ventura County. But I do want to make sure that we collaborate with the different counties to learn, right? We're always learning from others, and we're learning from our public health and our CEOs. And I understand that sensitivity. But I want to make sure that we're just in conversation. And these are the type of conversations that we can have in a public meeting where I can't call up a supervisor and ask a question and so forth. Because of the Brown Act, I would never want to violate that. Thank you, County Council, as I look at you. So, I want to make sure that I understand the board members' wants and desires. And I know that we are a very special county in the fact that we do have urban, suburban, and rural. And so, we take that in consideration in all of our decisions.
And can I also just add that I have a lot of confidence in what the state is doing and that it's like every week, more is being opened. And the fact that our staff are so good that they are able to basically jump through some major hoops. I mean, to get that, you know, staying up, you know, to the wee hours, way past midnight to, you know, make sure that we have the website available, a way that all our businesses can basically open up, all the retails and all, and then what the requirements are, and to have that clearly stated. I guess I found that to be very comforting to know that we can move in Ventura County as fast as the governor and that we are seeing continually rolling out. And it is a gradual rollout, which I know frustrates some, but it's happening, you know. It is opening. And I just really like the concerted effort and our ability to keep up so that we can open as quickly and as safely, which is the key, as safely as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments on that matter? I'm glad that I understand the pulse and desires of our board. And we'll still encourage our communication with other counties, our communication between our CEOs, our public health, all of our directors talk to each other with our associations, CSAC. I think the UCC, the urbans, Ten Act, I think we're getting good momentum, and I think we need to follow it. It's just making sure where our targets are.
And just as I know you know, Chair Long and board members, we do communicate regularly with our other county CEOs, north and south, to understand where they're, where they're moving, best practices, ideas, and approaches, and working with the state. So, definitely, regular basis, and it's very helpful. Thank you.
All right. So, next, we're going to go through the six areas of the report card. And first is our tracing efforts. And for that is Hannah Edmondson. Hannah?
My name is Hannah Edmondson, and I'm a senior registered public health nurse in the communal disease program with Ventura County Public Health Department. I've had the opportunity to work as a nurse specializing in infectious diseases for the past 35 years. I am fortunate to have the privilege of working as a public health nurse for the county of Ventura for the past six years. And today, I would like to give an update on our contact tracing program. We are in the process of recruiting and training 60 contact tracers for our county. Last week, we provided training and equipment for our first 15 contact tracers. And today, we will be providing training for our next or third group of contact tracers. These new staff members are members of our larger county workforce. Our training program is guided by the contact tracing program for the Centers for Disease Control. And topics covered in the training program include interviewing methods, communication techniques, and follow-up of contacts. The contact tracers will be grouped in groups of 10 and will be assigned to a public health nurse in the communal disease program. After a new COVID patient is reported to the health department, a public health nurse will interview the patient to provide guidance for case with emphasis on isolation in the home and elicitation of household contacts and, if any, contacts in the community. The public health nurse, after providing education for the patient and their contacts, will explain to the patient that a contact tracer will provide a follow-up phone call to the contacts. The follow-up phone call to the contacts will provide guidance and a list of resources available to assist the contacts successfully complete their quarantine. And the aim of the quarantine will be to assist in halting the transmission of COVID in the community. The patient with COVID infection will usually be asked to remain in isolation in their home for approximately 10 days unless they are requiring hospitalization. In the event a patient with COVID infection requests to be removed to an alternate site to protect the health of their family or their household members, the county has the ability to offer temporary housing, and that is only if requested and needed by the infected individual to be successful with their isolation. Alternatively, if it is felt the individual with COVID could isolate in their home and there is an at-risk family member in the home, the family may request, the family member may request temporary housing while the individual with COVID rests and recovers in their home. An example of an at-risk family member could be a senior citizen or a cancer patient undergoing treatment with chemotherapy. The opportunity to recuperate or protect a family member in an alternate housing site is a wonderful resource that the county is providing. And the ability to provide housing is only a resource, and no one will be removed from their home. We are here to help and simply want to be a trusted resource during this time and throughout the year. To give an example of how our public health nurses and our contact tracers will work together, this past Saturday, I telephoned a recently diagnosed COVID individual and learned a family lived in the house. After speaking with the family members, I could answer their questions and provide guidance on how to best care for the individual with COVID staying in the home while keeping the other family members safe. With the availability of expanded testing in Ventura County, I provided the link to the testing sites from the VC emergency website to assist them in locating testing. A follow-up message from the family to me the next day let me know they had successfully found testing in their community. As a public health nurse, I felt rewarded that I could provide guidance and resources for a family in the community. And I am grateful the county of Ventura has these valuable resources available. Our contact tracers will be able to continue to provide the support and follow-up that this family will need to complete their quarantine in their home with their family members. Our Ventura County contact tracers will follow up daily with the contacts assigned to them for monitoring to ensure they are healthy and to ensure their basic needs are met. Our county contact tracers will be able to utilize the resources available to assist with food and basic toiletries as needed while on quarantine in the event a contact is unable to obtain their needed supplies. The daily follow-ups will include twice-a-day temperature monitoring and symptom checks. And the contacts will be able to communicate with the contact tracers via a secure test messaging, telephone, or secure email. And if any of the contacts report signs or symptoms of COVID-19, the staff will alert their assigned public health nurse or an after-hours nurse to arrange and assist arranging for testing for COVID infection. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of questions. If you run into or in contact with someone else and you have a contact tracer nurse, help, public health nurse call you, are you mandated to do, to answer those questions? I have had to cut people ask me that, if it's a mandated program that you have to follow.
If we are calling a contact...
Yes.
We want to make sure that that contact understands that they were around somebody and that potentially that we think that they have been exposed to COVID-19. And we believe that it is in their best interest that they do need to stay in their home so that they can prevent the spread, and we will halt transmission in the community. So, yes, we would like very much to talk to them.
Thank you. I appreciate that because it's important, this is new territory for so many of us. I appreciated my neighbor calling me to tell me that they had a daughter that was positive for COVID-19. And he was able to tell me that the public nurse had called him and had advised them to go get testing. Could you go through that step? Where would they get testing?
Well, we're very blessed. We have a lot of testing resources right now in the county. So, on the VC emergency site, there is a link that gives you in each city where there is either a county urgent care community clinic, or we have two testing sites that have been provided by the state. We have one east county, one in west county, where people can go online and make an appointment to get tested. They can always, we encourage them, to contact their primary care provider first step to see if they can help you with testing.
Thank you. And then also, if a business hears that one of their employees was COVID-19 and have concerns, would they also call, contact the public health nurse or code compliance? Where would they go?
They can do both, as a matter of fact. Code compliance, we, our public health communal disease program is working very closely with COVID compliance so that we can make sure that we together know where businesses are that might have a COVID-positive employee. And then we can help guide and give them the best information to keep all of the other employees safe and any customers that might be coming in.
And I ask that because as we start to go down this road of reopening, myself, as a business owner, I would want to know that. I would want to know how to keep my employees safe in my community. So, thank you. Supervisors, do you have any questions? And seeing none, I really appreciate it. Our office has been called a lot about contact tracing and what it means. So, I really do appreciate the helpfulness and that we're getting more staff to be able to follow up so we could help people understand what this new virus is and how to protect others and exposure to it. So, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Chair Long. Thank you, Hannah. Next, we'll hear about our expanded testing capacity from Barry Zimmerman.
Good morning, Chair Long, Mr. Powers, board members. I'll advance the slides. We just heard about contact tracing there. We've heard a lot about, in general, testing and the expansion of testing. And I'm not going to repeat a lot of that, that Dr. Levin covered very well, what our goals are and the criteria that we're trying to achieve associated with the testing. I just want to make a few highlights there. We are very much focusing to leverage the state sites right now. They are up to scheduling fully, and we want to continue that pace with them right now. We did have a change in the location in the east county that I do want to make you aware of, that we are now at the Newbury Park Library is where they're testing in the east county right now. So, we do have a total of nine sites to restate that we have testing capacity spread throughout the county. The seven urgent care community clinics are available and as well as these two state contracted sites that are being utilized. We encourage everyone to access the testing information and the changes that occur as we expand and get more testing capabilities throughout different communities, that they can find that information on vcemergency.com there. I'll just show you the results. It was last Monday, so just over a week ago, we expanded our testing capacity throughout the county. And as you can see, we have seen an uptick in the total volume of testing that has occurred and has been reported. Just as an example, so our urgent care system, we kind of prior to the expansion had about three primary drive-in sites there, and we expanded to seven urgent cares. So, we went from just under 200 weekly tests to just under 500 tests on a weekly basis. So, that was quite an increase associated with that. Then, folding in the volume from the state contracted sites as well as targeted efforts that we'll continue to do as public health identifies locations that need to be tested. So, last week, we did have some care facilities that were tested specifically in, and those are the larger numbers. And that's what we hope to see as we move forward, additional work in that area where we can target exposed areas. So, as we consistently have done, we are targeting what, there I have the old vernacular of essential workers, but those workers that are in the high-risk situations. And so, those are what we typically are talking about, grocery workers, those that come in contact with multiple people and may have an exposure. So, we're still reaching to those individuals, as well as farm workers and others who display symptoms, we want them to be tested. We don't want them to go without being tested. And then, those that might have been associated with them or in close contact that may have been exposed. So, that's our goal. We are still working on expanding and hopefully, as we work this week and into next week, that we'll have additional testing sites to get our capacity up well, I wouldn't say beyond, but within the range that the governor is requesting that we have our capacity to test the residents. That is our goal, and we think we'll achieve that in the week, in the weeks coming. And that, I won't delabor the point. We've heard a lot about testing, and it is one of the primary efforts that we need to continue to educate the community on and to provide the access in order to allow greater expansion and opening within... and to provide the access in order to allow greater expansion and opening within the county. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. At this point is my update.
And how many, what's the percentage we're looking at for testing our residents? Well, hopefully we'll be able to have enough testing for anyone that has, would like to get tested. Is that?
Well, we, we are, we still follow the guidelines of the state and they're, they're kind of giving us the, the protocols of who should be tested. We, we've gone as wide as we can at this point in time. So anyone that has been, has a symptom, one of the symptoms of, of COVID, which there are a number of them there, or who have been in a close contact or exposed, we, we are asking them to be tested at this time. And so as we expand greater and greater, we might have the option to test anyone who desires. The, the, we would have to be somewhat cautious on what, interpreting what that means by testing individuals that are asymptomatic and come back negative on that, what that really means. That someone would have to be tested multiple times to assure that they, they don't have it. So, so we want to look at the, you know, the efficiency of that and, and, and the resources that we have. But our goal is definitely that anyone that has a symptom or has been exposed has access now and should be tested there. We, we do want to increase that capacity on a daily basis, about double what we're doing today. So, so anyone would feel free to, to be tested at that rate.
Thank you. And I, I'm not asking everyone to get tested. I hear it's a horrible test that the swab kind of reaches the back up to your brain, feels like, and is just not very pleasant. So it's not like we want to run out and go do one just because. I believe that there really does need to be a need.
Yes.
But that's for my own personal.
Yes, there are multiple techniques for the testing. So the ones that we are establishing and will have in the drive-ins are almost a self-testing environment. So it's, it's not quite as dramatic as you were, you were indicating there. But still one of the tests that, that is required or needed in, in cases, yes.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Supervisors, do you have any questions for Mr. Zimmerman?
I, I do.
Yes, Supervisor Parks.
As we look at being able to have more people tested who are asymptomatic, I wonder if we should not still keep a prioritization in place. For example, I'm not sure if we test all of our public safety personnel. And secondly, I think about people who want to see their loved ones in long-term care facilities who can't. It's just heartbreaking. And people who are perhaps dying in the ICU and can't have their loved one. But if we could test them, they could. So I just feel like there are still some priorities that we should give to testing. And I, I would hope that we do that.
Thank, thank you. We'll take those considerations and we'll, we'll discuss as we get more capacity, you know, how we move forward with those. Yes. Thank you for those comments.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, next up, Mr. Powers.
Yes, thank you. Next we'll hear from Steve Carroll, our EMS administrator. Talk about hospital surge capacity and some of our data report cards.
Good morning Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I'm Steve Carroll, Emergency Medical Service Administrator. Today I'll provide a quick update on our hospital current status and an overview of our personal protective equipment. The slide that's up today shows again the trends that we're watching for the COVID-positive hospitalized patients. So as Dr. Levin mentioned earlier, there was 28 currently hospitalized COVID patients. Of that 11 of those patients are within the ICU. The current hospitalized patients countywide is 595 patients and 76 in the hospital. So again, these COVID-positive patients are a very small subset of our entire hospitalized population. So we're watching that closely as it relates to the trend of our COVID-positive patients within the hospital settings as well as our hospital availability and what they're able to absorb if we, if we see a surge in patients. The current trend remains relatively stable. We see some little spikes and generally is relatively stable. There is currently 145 staffed and available beds at our eight hospitals. That's current licensed and staffed beds. We have additional beds that were identified in our surge planning at our eight hospitals and that remains available also. We do have one of our COVID-positive residents of the long-term care facilities that was able to be discharged home this last weekend. So we're down to two long-term care residents being held in our hospital holding areas. So that's one at Pleasant Valley Hospital and one at Community Memorial. So that's very positive that we're down to just two. We had a high of seven at one time in that program. For ventilators, we're also monitoring ventilators closely. We have 29 ventilators currently in use in the eight hospitals. And about 166 are reported as available through our hospital reporting system. Again, the ventilators are watched to make sure that we see, if we see a spike in, in significant ventilator usage, that's a trend that we would want to be very cautious with. For personal protective equipment, we are watching our personal protective equipment availability and usage at our hospitals and our entire healthcare system. We're watching our burn rates as well as requesting additional supplies where needed. In the past two months, these numbers are updated for this week. We've had 608,095 distributed, 497,500 procedure masks, 33,500 gowns, 15,750 goggles or face shields and 4,000 boxes of gloves. Interesting enough, we are one of the few counties that are actually distributing to our entire healthcare system. Many of our counties are not supplying to our ancillary healthcare partners such as the doctor's offices and the dentists and, and the skilled, well skilled nursing are getting some, but mainly they're, they're distributing to their skilled nursing and to their hospitals and to their first responders. And we have done from the very beginning, trying to make sure that we're addressing our entire healthcare system with personal protective equipment. We have with VAPs and with the reopening plans, we have received a significant increase in doctor's offices and dentists requesting and not being able to, to acquire the supplies on their own. They have reported that as small little, you know, private offices, they're not, they're not able to get contracts with these larger supply chains and the supply vendors that are supplying our hospitals and the larger contracts. So they're having challenges getting the equipment. So they are requesting it from us and we're supplying that where we can. We also have received word that FEMA will be supplying PPE directly to our skilled nursing facilities. So our 19 skilled nursing facilities will be getting supplies in two different chunks over the next couple of weeks. That supply is designed to get them to their 14-day supply. That was being directed specifically to our SNFs, to the skilled nursing facilities. Again, there's 19 of those. So we're expecting to see about 10,000 additional masks, 9,600 gowns, 900 goggles and 484 boxes of gloves delivered directly to those facilities. We also did see an uptick in our volume, both in our emergency, our EMS as well as our hospital and our ER volumes. And of course, with the return of elective procedure, the hospitals are still monitoring closely their availability to expand the capacity as, as needed if we see an additional surge. Available for any questions?
Supervisors, do you have any questions for Mr. Carroll?
I do want to comment if I can. You know, it really is a Ventura County model that we set by taking individuals in long-term care facilities and putting them in the hospital even though they didn't warrant hospitalization just to keep that spread from happening. And I know that other counties are, are doing the same thing now. But I just am really impressed that we did that because that, as we're seeing, is one of the major areas where we're seeing severe cases and deaths. So just kudos to the decision-makers who did that and to the hospitals for collaborating, for taking these individuals out of the long-term care facilities. It is a great model and I'm so glad that we are able to do it and that it's been so effective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would completely agree with Supervisor Parks. Also, the doctor's offices that have contacted us and appreciate the hotline to call and to figure out where to get PPE or any of that information has been very helpful for them. And I know testing the long-term care units, we've heard in many different counties that that's a difficult one if a COVID case does happen. So appreciate making sure that we know for the staffing and for those that are living there that their health is very important to us and we want to make sure that they're kept safe as well as everyone else. Any other supervisors, any questions, comments? In hearing none, Mr. Powers, did you have anything?
Yeah, just to reemphasize to our picture of our entire medical community here. Certainly our hospitals have been amazing partners in this. But our clinic systems and our physician offices as well, coordinating with them in terms of services, testing, PPE availability and so forth. Appreciate Steve and EMS working with them and systems like Finca del Camino Real, Community Memorial's clinic system, the county's ambulatory care system, identity and private physician offices throughout the county. We're all in this together and our medical community is, is truly working well together to support our, to support these events.
Agreed. And, and thanks to CalOES too. Their team of trying to make sure we have our orders in place and, and things that we need has been really crucial to us. So the federal and state to fulfilling those orders, we greatly appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Okay, just a little recap. So here are those six elements, key metrics on our roadmap, our road to reopening. And so, so this is where we've been. And just that top one, again, the data. Of course, we looked at this number of positive patients, COVID-positive patients in the hospital and the ICU patients. This is really a key metric that the state is focusing on and our public health leaders are focusing on. And so at the moment it's stable, but that's why we wanted to share that with the public so they can see what we see and as the progress that they're making and the impact it's having on this really critical measure. The other piece that's important in this area is the vulnerable populations, protecting those vulnerable populations. As supervisors, you've mentioned the long-term care focus that is happening. And also when there's a positive patient or staff member at one of these facilities, public health also goes in and does some focused intensive testing in those areas. So we can really try to protect as many folks as we can because we know that those can be really the hotspots for, for spreading the virus. And then our effort to house the medically fragile homeless continues day and night. Medically fragile and 65 and plus, in my understanding is they're up over 340 individuals who are currently housed safely. And that is, is going very well, but that is supporting those individuals, but also protecting our community's health. And then you can see the other areas that we've already touched on and, you know, the tracing, the testing, stabilization of, stability of hospitalizations and the PPE and the certification. So those are the key elements. But now the next step is this regional variation that the board members, board members have raised and the governor has talked about. And you can move more quickly in some of these areas into areas like offices, seated dining and malls. But the criteria is extremely high. And our understanding is that it's, the state really intended this for small, small rural counties that only had a handful of cases, not counties of population of any size like say Ventura County or larger. And so, but I know that those, those criteria are under discussion as we speak and have been. And we've been involved in some of those discussions and because we meet most of the criteria, but there are a few that are hard for some, many, many counties to meet. So we thought it would be, even though those are currently under discussion, thought it'd be helpful to share with the board and the community sort of how we stack up with those readiness measures. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Health Director, Riggo Vargas.
Good Tuesday morning again. So Riggo Vargas, Public Health Director and members of the board, CEO Powers. Thank you for the opportunity to share, give an update on the, the metrics for potential accelerated reopening into further stage two. First, the, the state asked for a readiness plan to be submitted when a county or a coalition of counties feel that they want to move into and can move into this accelerated phase. So there's 13 areas within this plan. Not all of them lend themselves to metrics, but the following slides, I believe there's seven areas that do lend themselves to hard numbers, rates and metrics. And so that's what I'll be sharing with you. The rest of the areas outside of these seven metrics is more of a written plan that, you know, we, what we would look to in terms of trigger points to possibly stepping back a little bit from moving forward. Or also what we plan to do in terms of continue to attain additional PPE and/or testing. But in terms of the metrics themselves, so there's seven. You know, before actually I go through the slides, I, I wanted to, I do have an update on the numbers. So I apologize. Let me step back a little bit and give you an update on our numbers for today that we'll be reporting. So we'll be reporting 20 additional positive individuals in Ventura County. That brings us to just under 700 at 698 positive individuals in Ventura County. We'll be reporting 215 additional tested. And so that brings us just under 14,000, namely at 13,930 Ventura County residents have been tested. So just under 700 positive and just under 14,000 total tested. We won't be reporting any additional deaths today, but most likely tomorrow we will. Unfortunately, we're looking at six potential deaths. First, five of them came to us last, late last week, a little bit of a surprise for outside of Ventura County residents that died in other counties. And these are deaths that occurred over several weeks past. And we had not gotten information on those deaths from our neighboring counties. So we're looking into those five cases to make sure that they are Ventura County residents. But yeah, we also didn't get complete information on their, on their conditions. And so before we report them, we want to make sure that they're first Ventura County residents and that they're, that they are confirmed COVID positives. But that was five cases that came to our attention late last week. And then we're investigating one additional case that came from one of our area hospitals. And most likely tomorrow we'll be able to confirm and announce that we will have at least a 20th fatality case in our county. That's very unfortunate, but those are our numbers for today. So back to the.
Can I ask you a question on the deaths? I've been asked about the clarification of what is considered a COVID-19 death. If, if someone commits suicide, but they tested positive for COVID-19, it's still considered a COVID-19 death? Or if someone's tested positive for COVID-19 and the flu, is it still COVID-19 death? Or is it someone who's had congenital heart disease for a very long time and they are unfortunate to get COVID-19? It's still considered a COVID-19 death? Who decides what's considered a death or not as it relates to COVID-19?
Yeah, it's a good question. We get that question a lot. We, local health departments are under strict guidance from CDC and the California Department of Public Health on classifying these deaths and they're verified what we report to the state. The state reviews the numbers and they then report those numbers for the statewide reporting. And so people obviously can die of, have multiple comorbidities, multiple underlying health conditions that led to their death. But if, if that death, that person that died was positive for COVID, that is counted as a COVID-related death, that doesn't mean that that's the only reason why they died, but they were positive for COVID when they died. And so that is the count. And so that doesn't mean that that person didn't have another health condition, but they were confirmed as positive for COVID. And again, this is in accordance with state and federal guidelines.
And so the other question I get a lot of is was this, is our death rate currently in the county more or less than it was last year? And I know you don't have that data, but maybe at some other time it would be good for us to understand that because those are questions our community has.
Yeah. So I can get some more data in terms of what deaths we had up to this point last year. But I know that our, you know, almost 20 deaths that we've had for COVID is higher than our average annual for flu.
Thank you. I, it's just information that I, I'm not sure what we're doing with it, but it's just good information statistically. I, I feel it gives us reassurance that we're doing the right things. One death is more than we want. Let me state that. I'm just trying to understand how things are classified. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So then I'll go through the, I believe, six, seven slides. And again, these are out of the 13 points that we would need to submit as our readiness plan if we wanted to proceed to a accelerated stage two for additional openings such as what Mr. Powers mentioned, perhaps in dine, in restaurant dining, some office opening, some, some of the stores in the malls. This is some of the criteria that we must meet. And so And so the good news is that we are meeting the majority of the readiness criteria, but there are three, as you'll see in my concluding slides, where we're not currently meeting those. So the first that I'll share with you is around testing capability and capacity. They're looking specifically at a measure of residents. The 75% of residents must be within 30 minutes of a test site. And so they want to make sure that Ventura County residents have access to testing and while, as Mr. Zimmerman mentioned, we're still looking at those that have symptoms and or have been close contact with identified positive individual. We're looking to open up that criteria and as we do that, we want to make sure that there's more and more test sites. We're happy to report that we've, we do have the majority of the population, in fact, 85% of Ventura County residents live within five miles of our current nine sites that, that have been shared with you. And so we feel very comfortable that we're meeting this measure because we're definitely within 30 minutes of a drive for most residents, all residents to come to one of these nine sites. And then of course, also on a limited basis, hospitals and other clinic systems are also doing some testing, not, not just the nine that I've mentioned, we've mentioned before. Another metric for accelerated reopening has to do with hospital capacity. We believe we're achieving this. Our hospitals, as I've been mentioning before, have been great partners and our EMS team has been doing a tremendous job along with our OES team in getting, you know, the necessary PPE to the hospitals. And we believe that the hospitals with that assistance and with efforts that they've made to increase their rooms and other materials, fail over potential surge capacity, that we meet this, this criteria. So a majority of this slide, although busy, indicates the blue, the small number at the bottom is less than 5%, though that's the percent of all people that are in the hospital, of those that are positive for COVID. And that's less than 5% on, on even on this, this one, I think it's a little bit over 5%. So suffice it to say that we feel very comfortable and confident that our hospitals would be able to meet this surge capacity of 35% from current. And the yellow bar indicates the current capacity and most of them around, you know, 48, 50% currently, even without the additional 80, 800 surge capacity of beds. So all in all, our hospitals have stepped up and done a great job to increase our capacity to see additional patients if we ever got back into a surge situation. Another hospital capacity metric for accelerated reopening has to do with the county hospital facilities having a robust plan to protect the hospital workforce, both clinical and non-clinical with PPE. And as you've heard Mr. Steve Carroll mentioned, we continue to do a great job in supplying and working with our partners to supply them with additional and replenish PPE. All of our hospitals have conservation plans in place and so we feel that we've met this, this metric. Another area that the state is looking for the accelerated-
Excuse me, Dr. Levin, I mean, Rigo, could I interrupt right now here for a second?
Sure.
Go ahead Supervisor Bennett.
Well, it's, well, I'll go ahead and let you finish this slide. It's about the nursing home. So go ahead, do the slide and then I'll, I'll interrupt.
Okay. Thank you. So this, this one is around vulnerable populations and as everyone knows, it's been a priority for Ventura County to have put a lot of effort on our elderly and those that have underlying health conditions that increase their risk for illness and death from COVID. And so we feel very comfortable that we meet the criteria that the state has laid out for the accelerated reopening with regard to specifically skilled nursing facilities having a minimum of 14 days supply of PPE. And in fact, our healthcare coalition leader, Janelle Hahn, did a survey yesterday of our 20 or so skilled nursing facilities and the majority replied back that they either currently have the 14-day supply of PPE and/or that they, they're needing a few additional supplies. And so we're making efforts to resupply them. And so we feel that we also meet this measure. Supervisor Bennett, I'm not sure if you want to ask your question.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I, I did want to make sure that the, you know, that this is, this is where the battle's really going to be a major, this is going to be a major battleground for us to continue with these vulnerable populations as long as this virus is running around. And I wanted to make sure that in the long run, we're planning on continuing to keep these skilled nursing facilities supplied with PPE and the other things they need. I mean, I don't know if they need, you know, disinfectants, do they need access to wipes or, you know, all that kind of stuff. So we're, we're, you, you have a system where we're checking regularly with them about those kinds of needs and is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct Supervisor. We are in constant communication both through EMS and public health nursing. They visited all the sites and they're constantly communication. As I mentioned, even yesterday, they did a quick poll and yeah, so we're-
And one other, one other question then, as we move into the area of antibody testing and, and, you know, and surveillance strategies, you know, those facilities are going to need help with that and, and I don't know what our long-term strategy is with that, with the facilities and antibody testing and stuff, but that could make a big difference for them. Do we have a game plan for specifically addressing that with the facilities?
We do Supervisor Bennett. Mr. Zimmerman is leading an effort for us to fine tune that plan, but I can assure you that it includes testing, high-risk, vulnerable workforce members such as those from the skilled nursing facilities and other long-term care facilities to be first in line to get the antibody testing along with other vulnerable populations such as those service workers and healthcare workers.
Great. So you'll be talking with them about what the long-term strategy is there?
We will, certainly. Thank you.
Also-
Thank you very much.
Also with that, I did hear in the conference, the answer to the, from the governor, Governor Newsom yesterday in his press conference, in Kern County, they were asking about numbers of the long-term nursing facilities being separate from the, the rest of the population. Are we looking at doing something like that? Or I know when we get our information, we're, we're talking about those things. Is there anything else that we need to be doing?
In terms of the positives Supervisor?
Uh huh, yes.
Yeah, we, we can break out from our current positives. How many are from long-term care facilities, so we can report that later, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So that was good news for, I believe there was four slides, four areas where we're meeting or exceeding the expectations for accelerated reopening into stage two. But there's three particular areas where we're not and it's, has to do with actually a very high bar that the state set out for counties. And as Mr. Powers, Powers mentioned, it's mostly the northern county, rural California counties that, that meet these. And one of them is no more than one case per 10,000 resident in the past 14 days. That would translate to no more than 85 cases in the last 14 days. We're at 158 cases in the last 14 days. So our rate is 1.85 versus that one that the state expects. This was a kind of a surprise when I heard that the state was going to be holding counties to this, to this measure. And so we're going to continue to monitor situation. This dashboard is, shows that our, our positive cases on a daily basis and this dashboard is going to be live for residents. And here, the, the community is going to be able to track how we're doing on a daily basis. So as of a few days ago, we were at the 1.85 and again, it's very strict expectation of only one positive case in the last 10,000, for 10,000 population in the last 14 days. So again, this data dashboard, another data will be made available to the public as early as Thursday so that everyone can, along with us, can be following the, the readiness criteria. Another measure where we're not meeting the criteria to move into accelerated stage two is COVID deaths, no COVID deaths, not even a couple, but no COVID deaths in, in the last 14 days. And so what we've been very good, this bottom line, I know it's hard to see, but you'll have it on the dashboard, the community will. You see that since about May, May 1st, April 30th, we've been at 19. So we're almost at 14 days, but again, with us most likely tomorrow confirming that we have at least one additional death, our 14-day period to meet this benchmark will be reset. And so that's why we feel that this one's very strict. So even though with, like it says, no COVID deaths in the last 14 days, that's quite strict. And then you see, we've had 19 deaths and it is very unfortunate we had any deaths, but we've been fairly flat with our numbers and even then we would not be able to meet this benchmark. Okay? I believe this is the third area where we're not meeting the state's expectation to move into accelerated phase two and that's minimum daily testing volume of 1.5 residents, one and a half tests per 1,000 residents. So we're not achieving this. Efforts obviously are underway and it's a priority for us to increase our testing capacity, but currently we're at 0.31 person in Ventura County per 1,000 resident. And so we would have to hit the, hit the benchmark of doing almost 13,000 tests daily in Ventura County to meet this, this benchmark.
Mr. Vargas, I believe you meant 1,300, 1,300 per day?
1,300, sorry. 13,000, yeah. When, so based on our population, we would be under 1,300 tests. And as you heard earlier, we're making progress. We've had upwards of 600 at one day, on a, on a one day tested, but we would need to be on a consistent basis, testing 1,000, almost 300 individuals per day. And so we're going to get there, but when we're going to get there, it's going to take a few days or weeks. And so currently we're not meeting that, that metric.
But it's not because we don't want to meet the metric? Because I think if we had the supplies, if we had the testing capability, we could do it. Am I correct on that, Mr. Powers?
Yeah. Yes, we are exhausting every effort to pull down, to find more testing capacity at the state level, federal level, private companies, private labs, you name it. OES is scouring the country and the world really looking for these tests. And we're not alone in this, of course. This is a worldwide shortage of these tests as well. But again, you know, we're not victims and we're out there pushing to get more tests and we're getting more tests. So we're going to get there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And so lastly, in terms of, you know, the, this is another slide that will be in the dashboard. So there, our residents will be able to see our, our, how we're doing on this measure. So the 0.31 that I mentioned that we're currently at will be there in the dashboard and the number on a daily basis of our testing will also be there in that dashboard. So I believe there's only one more slide. Yes, so on Thursday, we expect to roll out this slide that our great partners and EMS, OES and Public Health have put together and we're going to be releasing it and showing it, sharing it with our residents, the public so that everyone could see how we're doing with our, our metrics. And our daily reporting numbers will also be found there. So you can see we will have total tests performed, people tested, the positive rate, you know, how we're doing with, with regard to race, ethnicity, all the numbers that we're reporting on a daily basis will be in the dashboard as well as these additional metrics for the readiness criteria towards accelerated reopening. So that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
I'll open it up first to the supervisors online. Do you have any questions in regards to this dashboard and meeting the, these points? I'm not hearing any. However, I am concerned in regards to, as goals, we want to hit all of these, but without hitting these, what is, what does that mean? I know our community is really looking to see how we can get to the accelerated phase two and I know we are in collaboration with the state and trying to give them our information so we could better come at it together. But you stated on the deaths, some of these deaths were out of county is where they got the COVID?
Yes, so our, we're looking into those five cases that came to our attention late last week, but there, there appear to be Ventura County residents that died in a different county and we didn't get information from those counties that there were Ventura County residents until late last week.
Right. And, and one of the accelerating parameters they're looking at was zero deaths in 14 days. And I'm not sure if any urban county would hit that. Am I not thinking right?
No, that's exactly right in terms of even with our low numbers of deaths and positives, that's what the state has so far. So, you know, we're, we're looking at our numbers for that reason because that's what the state has laid out, but we're in conversation with Mr. Powers and CEO's office and Dr. Levin, stakeholders in terms of our potential to still put up a readiness plan and submitted to the, potentially submitted to the state and seeing if, you know, even without meeting all 13 specific areas, if there might be a way to still move into that area. So we're exploring, but Mr. Powers?
That's exactly right, Mr. Vargas. And we were having those discussions at the state level and it's not just our county, of course. It's a statewide issue and I know that the governor's office and the state public health officer is having these discussions and they're listening. I mean, it's a very healthy engagement and discussion back and forth. So I think that's helpful and that's, these are the measures, but the other thing to think about is the businesses that are included in this accelerated phase two. And, you know, whatever we do here, you know, we could do so safely. And you look at like offices, that's kind of what we had done with our limited business operations, 10 and under, you know, we, you can do this safely and that's the way we would do it with our great business partners here who want to protect their employees and their customers as well. So those are the very discussions we're having right now and I believe it's a statewide discussion really. So, so please stay tuned and more to come, definitely.
Well, and what I'm hearing today also is the importance of how many are in the hospital, right? And the surge capacity for that is, is one of those key indicators for us as a county as to how we're doing well and keeping our community safe. That sounds like a good, a good marker, but I, that, I'm not in, that's not my specialty.
Yeah. No, a great point Supervisor, that we were, all attention is on those COVID positive individuals and looking at, and hoping and looking for downward trend as well as those in ICU. And so we were fully confident last week before these specific additional measures came out, that we would meet criteria to go into accelerated reopening based on the previous criteria, but then some of these additional ones like no tests in the last 14 days and the testing of the 1.5 were additional measures. And so we're falling a little bit short on those, but I think again, with additional discussions, that we may still look to submit a plan even if we're not fully meeting all 13 areas.
Well, then also it's interesting is the White House put out the CDC requirements, their parameters of the trajectory downward, not a zero. And I'm, I'm wondering how we're going to be moving alignment with the county, the state and the federal onto the similar parameters. I'm just, we'll see what the governor comes out with, but I'd be interested in that definitely going that way.
Yeah, and I think what's important at this point too, is that these measures that we're taking to protect the public health also support and protect our local economy as well. They're in aligned. The more we can, you know, keep these numbers down, the more we can safely move to reopen our, our local economy, so.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. And just a couple more points here. Did want to just touch on a quick budget update and as we know, the governor has announced a $54 billion reduction in the state budget and of course, that will have an impact here locally. He's going to release his May revised budget on Thursday and so we'll all be paying close attention to that. We've been anticipating this, of course, here in our county because we, we know that with sales tax dropping and that'll have an impact on our realignment funds and so forth. So, but we did want to reassure the public that your board and our county are going to be relentless and advocating and taking every step that we can to protect particularly our core county services like safety, health and social services. And we believe your, your board has put the county in good position to help mitigate some of these impacts and better weather these, the storm that we are in. And you can see some of them right up there, the rainy day fund, the unassigned reserve is at 150 million, which is at an all-time high. We've also been setting aside about 68 million. It's actually more than that, but some of that we've drawn down for the, this, to respond to the COVID crisis and there's probably about 15, 20 million of that that's already been drawn down and will get reimbursed through FEMA or CARES Act, so that number will be higher. But that's also having those reserves enabled us to move quickly, for example, to- But that's also having those reserves enabled us to move quickly, uh for example, to move medically fragile homeless into housing very, very quickly, because we had those funds and we knew we could act, even though we know we'll get reimbursed for for nearly all of that. Also, next year, and this is something that we don't get to say very often, and almost have to read it several times, but it's, you know, there will be some pension savings next year, because one of the, you know, the the losses are smoothed over time, and and one of the big uh sections of losses is is gonna be paid off this year, so there will be some savings next year that will help cushion some of the impact, uh as well as the ongoing uh efficiency programs that we have. So, uh, you know, definitely gonna be an impact here locally, uh but just wanted to reassure the public uh that Ventura County is 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 positioned well to uh to try to mitigate those impacts and protect our core services here at the county. I had just two final points.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, we haven't talked uh much about the uh the vulnerable uh populations here today, so, uh but I did want to just touch on uh HSA has done now twenty-six thousand wellness calls uh to homebound seniors and vulnerable folks uh in their homes, and I know that makes a big difference. AAA uh has provided now, uh it's just a staggering number since the beginning of the COVID virus, over three hundred and three hundred and forty thousand meals uh to seniors and and homebound individuals, and uh so these programs are having a big impact, and we do get some really nice calls, and we got a call just yesterday from a nice senior who just says that uh, her name was Luce, she's calling because you guys just delivered me restaurant emergency food, uh because I am disabled and was recently injured. Uh, and this is so beautiful, they bought me food, brought me food for several days. Uh, you guys are angels, I really want to thank you. It's just beautiful how you take care of your seniors, and she says, who does this? Uh, she's just extremely grateful. So, anyway, I just appreciate uh the team's great work and appreciate the ongoing uh community engagement and dialogue that we have and the good ideas that we get from all of you, and uh we're gonna continue to move forward uh as as we go, so, thank you.
Agreed, thank you, and I just want to say thank you to Mike Powers, I appreciate all the uh attention you've given to this uh fourth disaster of our county. Um, it's an amazing uh process, and I I have to say, we have had goodwill come to Ventura County because we have worked with these uh people in the state. Now, I I would say consider them some of my friends, because we've been working together so long on on the importance of keeping Ventura County strong and safe for our communities. And I just want to say to all the staff that is watching and that is here today, thank you for your continued commitment to this. Um, we do this with you, and for the safety of our community, thank you to all the community members that are out there as well, that are doing your daily uh staying at a distance and and I know you guys are all frustrated one way or another, we all are, um, but I just wanted to say thank you very much, because I know we are working hard. Uh, we just got a a letter to support the state senate budget proposal for UCCs. I mean, we're doing that on the dais as we're moving with CSAC and trying to get conference calls to what the governor is gonna say at twelve o'clock today. And our our movement is so fast that I really appreciate everyone's um flexibility on this and understanding, but I also want you to tune in to our vcemergency.com every day, you've got your daily up updates there. Uh, we have our press release, thank you to Ashley Buss Tista for putting those together Monday, Wednesday and Friday, and all of our department heads who are coming to educate our community. And then also with the businesses, having that website turned around in less than twenty-four hours, to be so nimble and prepared to support our businesses and work with them, I really appreciate that, because it is a win-win for everybody.
Chair Long, thank you so much for those uh those comments. I did want to add one more piece to this uh this budget update, uh that in terms of federal funding, and you made me think about it with our federal advocacy, we did receive a check from the federal government for a hundred and forty-seven million dollars, the county did, uh to help fund COVID-related expenses here. That is also going to help cushion the impact uh of this virus's impact on our county budget and to help protect core services. Right now, we're looking at some of the guidance. Uh, it appears at the moment that we can use it for already budgeted folks who are working on the COVID uh virus response, and that's many of our county employees. But the other piece that we don't have yet is flexibility in using it for lost revenues, and we've been advocating at the federal level, your board has been advocating, and why that's important is because as we look at uh the federal cuts that are gonna happen next year, these funds could help us sustain these critical programs like social health and safety programs at a time when we believe our community needs them the most. And just to give you example of some of the social service programs, CalFresh, food stamps, CalWorks, Medi-Cal, all of these programs are administered by counties like ours here. And so to be able to have the flexibility to use this wonderful funding that we've received from the federal government would really help us further stabilize and sustain these critical services now. So th- these elements, the reserves, the pension savings, as well as this federal funding uh will help us, no doubt it's gonna be a challenge and there will be reductions and impacts, but I just wanted the public to be aware of these key uh pieces that will help us mitigate and sustain as we move through. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisors, do you have any final que- um questions, thoughts, comments on COVID nineteen and our updates? Supervisor Parks, I see you on screen.
Yes, I I have uh two. Uh, one, I thought uh we have Dr. Frank Hauser today, so I had a question that I was saving for him, um, but our nation's Frank Hauser is Dr. Fauci. And Dr. Fauci uh today testifying that his main concern is the potential that if we reopen too fast, that we could have a uh a second coronavirus wave that hits us, and that that has always been a concern, is the potential for uh another surge, and looking at, you know, at the Spanish flu, that happened, and the second wave was severely worse than the first. And I'm wondering if we are having plans uh in that potential, you know, if there's something we can do now that will make that potential less likely, or how we can um, you know, still have some PPEs, for example, if that occurs, I'm just wondering about what plans we may be doing uh to deal with that, if it it becomes uh if it happens.
That's a very valid point, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Supervisor Parks. Uh, Dr. Frank Hauser had stepped out just momentarily, and if we can get him back here, we will have your question answered. Um, I think it's gonna fall.
The other point I wanted to make is I, it's good to see the funds coming to help us reimburse uh, you know, I know the CARES Act brought in a hundred and seventy-one million dollars to our transportation commission, you know, to go to our our different cities and all for transportation. But when you realize um how incredible the need is for, as we just mentioned, all those services that we're providing, uh that that to me really needs to be the focus in terms of, you know, how we are dealing with our most vulnerable, those at most risk, and unfortunately, it does cost money to do what we're doing, to do the testing, to to get the supplies, uh and to be able to feed people who would otherwise not be able to get food because of these circumstances, so uh we're, we just have to hope that we will continue to have the necessary funds to reimburse us, and also recognizing the state is in the situation it is, because they're also assisting our county. But I do have to say, we are in very good stead. We are um a conservative county when it comes to financing, and we have put aside over the last fifteen, twenty years now, uh funds in our rainy day fund for emergencies, and how fortunate we are now that we have done that. And a lot of that has to do with the work of uh our good staff, uh our supervisors for holding the line and good sound financing, financial principles, so I'm glad we're in that that situation, and um when uh Dr. Frank Hauser is back, he can address that question, I appreciate it, thank you.
We we have him here, we just got him down, and he's gonna, um, if you could ans- ask your question to him again, uh that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Dr. Frank Hauser, uh, Dr. Fauci was testifying today um at the senate, uh talking about and spent most of his time just talking about his concern that there could be, uh if we reopen too quickly, there could be a a second surge, and and knowing what happened with the Spanish flu, that second one was significantly more severe than the first. So I'm wondering what plans we're doing, are we um putting aside PPEs in that eventuality? Are there are there things that we're doing? Uh, obviously, we want to avoid it at all costs, but are we doing any kind of planning for that potential?
Dr. Frank Hauser, thank you.
Chair Long, uh, Mr. Powers and supervisors, yeah, uh Supervisor Parks, the answer is that um the wise approach that our county has taken has really put us in a place that we can prepare if and when the surge occurs. Uh, I've seen some of the clips from uh Mr. Fauci's uh presentation, and and I think he's warning us uh that the uh threat of this virus is not gone, and that as we do reopen, uh which we need to, it needs to be done uh with great care and with caution and with the ability to uh take a step back if there is a surge. Um, and I think, you know, all, it it was only six and a half weeks ago when our doubling rate was uh such that we would have been buried if if it would have continued, and I think because of what uh has been been done in our county, it's given us the ability to do the things that you were asking about, and and that is, uh, we are collecting or or looking at every possible resource and preparing ourselves with PPE in case the uh rate of this disease increases uh several fold. Uh, and some of that is still difficult to acquire, and we're looking at uh alternative sources for that. Uh, and then there are s- some of the things that we've implemented, like telemedicine, telehealth, uh the use of the hygienists as trained um observers to to protect ourselves, that we've just been allowed that time to prepare, so that if and when a surge does come, uh we will be ready for it.
Did that an- answer? Do you have any other questions, Supervisor Parks?
Uh, I thank you for that, and I I'm glad that we are looking at what the needs are beyond what we're dealing with just today, right? And and we have gotten into a better position, uh there's ways of, I've seen that you can use a venti- one ventilator for more than one patient, those those kind of things that we could go into if necessary, so um I I'm really glad that we have you, Dr. Frank Hauser, uh because uh, you know, it it certainly uh provides a lot of confidence to our hospital staff and and to our community, knowing that we are being as prepared as we possibly can, not just for today, but for uh future eventualities if they come to be. Thank you.
Thanks, and on behalf of the hospital and the hospital workers, I I would have to echo that sentiment towards our leadership team. I think that the leadership in this county has been very wise and careful, and for those of us in the hospital setting, uh that really has allowed us the time to prepare.
Thank you very much. Uh, any other supervisors, any questions, comments, concerns? I just know that personally, I'm getting feedback even on my emails and texts right now, uh thanking all of our department heads for clarity and for giving some information to understand why we're moving so quick or not so quick, uh reasons why we're following the state guidelines, and so I really want to appreciate everyone's uh open conversation on this today, because in the end, this is how it helps all of us. And so really do appreciate uh the questions to our answers, or the answers to our questions, so thank you. Mr. Powers, anything else? Okay, there it is, this is only a little bit of what's going on in our departments for the COVID nineteen. I appreciate the working with the cities and our uh co- OES calls on Wednesdays to make sure that everyone is uh has the same information in regards to how we are doing. So with that, I will now move on to our board comments, thank you very much. Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, board members. Again, I want to thank all the staff for the excellent work this morning, excellent presentations, bringing us up to speed on the COVID uh concerns we have for our community. This morning, I have a list of uh people that like to adjourn in memory of, and I'll give that to the clerk. Also, last Thursday, I want to share that the Ventura County sheriffs held a a their annual peace officers ceremony virtually, and I want to thank Sheriff uh E. U. and his staff for putting together a beautiful video to continue the remembrance of the officers that lost their lives in the line of duty, alongside with city chiefs, Kelvin Highway Patrol, and patrols in the county. I did a great job. Also, I just want to share that over in Nylon Acres, like a report far from Mike Barber that they served, have served to date sixteen thousand lunches and approximately twelve thousand pounds of food and to the over the Nylon Promise, and they had numerous, numerous volunteers helping them out. Also today, I'm sure you read in the headlines, the great article on the Star, uh and the excellent work that Mike is doing out there in the Nylon, under the Nylon Promise, giving food for families or children, and also signing up many individuals for ice, our census. And I think this is extremely important, how a a couple of individuals can take o- o- over a a community, a neighborhood, and help it to to the max, so I just want to thank uh Mike Barber and Mary Ann. Also, just lastly, for information, uh board members, to, we have an APCD one-thirty meeting, and I hope that you guys can join us today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Supervisor Zaragoza, handing it over to Supervisor Bennett.
Uh, thank you very much. First, Supervisor Zaragoza, I appreciate the reminder about APCD. Uh, I have a two o'clock of medical appointment, uh so I will not be uh on APCD, wanted you to know that.
Thank you.
Secondly, um, the comments I'd like to make besides uh adjourn in memory, which my uh my staff was giving to the clerk, um, is to comment on the challenge we have with the, at the trailheads uh in Ventura County. Uh, we had well over a thousand people uh at uh Trailhead um over the weekend uh up in the Santa Paula area, um, and uh it just gets, it gets to the point where it's just not safe for parking, people walking down uh, you know, down the highway, parking way up, and uh there's, there's really no place to walk, no place to park. Uh, so I just want to try to use this opportunity to implore people to please use these trails like they were designed, and that is for people to be able to get out um i- into the wilderness and see wilderness, so there was a lot of trash left, um, and if everybody would just try to help everybody else, just encourage everybody else to make sure they pick up their trash, make sure that they uh, you know, practice uh uh safe practices and stuff. We want to allow people to continue to get outside, it's uh one of the few recreation areas that, you know, one of the few recreations that you can have, and it's generally pretty safe to be outside, but uh we need help, and uh if we, i- if it doesn't work this weekend, we'll end up having to close the trailhead, and uh it'd be nice to not have to do that. So with regard to trailheads and just all of the places, but just in general, our our trails are getting uh heavier use uh than normal. Now, I look forward to the fact that Los Angeles County is supposed to be opening their trails up, um, and uh the state is also opening their trails up, and that should uh relieve the concentration that we've been getting uh in the back mountains of of Ventura County. So appreciate cooperation of the public, and the final thing, I just, you you can't end the comments without just commenting on the tremendous work being done by our staff, and uh I appreciate the leadership of Mr. Powers and then um developing that uh real team atmosphere that you've created, uh and all the team members playing their role. Uh, it's uh great to see it every week, and I know we're increasing the public confidence in in government overall in spite of um some people's frustrations with certain things. Thanks a lot, and I hope everybody will stay safe out there.
Thank you very much for your comments, Supervisor Bennett. Supervisor Huber.
Thank you. Uh, May has been designated as National Mental Health Month. Now more than ever, we need to be aware of the extra stresses on our mental health, especially related to loss of jobs and other severe economic impacts. As policymakers, let's maintain uh recognition and have As policymakers, let's maintain recognition and have compassion for our residents impacted by the stay-at-home orders. We are improving the physical health of our county, and now is the time to address the impacts of our economic health and ultimately, our mental health as a community. We have an excellent support system in our county and where folks can access that help from VCE emergency or from the 211 hotline. Let's stay well on our road to recovery. I'd also like to commend the hard work of our staff during these trying times. I feel very comfortable that they're really, really coming through for us, and I commend all of you for your hard work. I'd like to adjourn in memory of the people on the list I provided, clerk of the board. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Supervisor Huber. Supervisor Parks. Supervisor Parks, you might be muted.
Hi, thank you. A couple of things I'd like to comment on. One is the Canaan Shuttle is going to start service again next week. That's out in Oak Park. And I know that there are a lot of individuals who enjoy it, being able to take the shuttle instead of having to drive, particularly those who can't drive. And I know that our Transportation Commission and also the City of Thousand Oaks that runs the service have pretty good guidelines in place to help protect the people who use it, the riders, and then seeing that they stay six feet apart from each other, and they're having them enter at the back door to help protect the driver. And the driver actually is now getting off while the riders get on. So ways to work in this new normal, as they say. Also, we did have reopening of trails here that were pretty successful, but I agree with Supervisor Bennett. I was pretty shocked to see trails that normally are pretty well maintained, just seeing people maybe who haven't been there before just leaving trash. It just really surprised me. We had cases of graffiti and all in a city park here. So it is, it is sad to see the disrespect that people who have come to use the parks now are giving. So hopefully, you know, I was out there helping to pick up trash, that others will see that and continue to show how we're supposed to respect our open spaces. Ventura County Animal Services also is resuming its pet adoptions. I'm really happy to see that. I know since a lot of individuals are staying at home, you now have that opportunity to not be alone, too. By going on to our Animal Services website, you can adopt online with, you get a virtual telephone adoption counseling session. So if you go to VCAS, that's like Ventura County Animal Services, vcas.us/pets, you can sign up and see about adopting one of our pets from the animal shelter. I also wanted to congratulate Rosemary Allison, who is Assembly Member Irwin's Choice for the Legislative Women's History Month. And Rosemary has worked in so many great venues to assist the community, raise funds for the American Cancer Society, YMCA, for the troops. She's on our Municipal Advisory Council in Santa Rosa Valley and also part of our Santa Rosa Valley Community Emergency Response Team. And then finally, I want to close out and kind of echoing what Supervisor Huber pointed out to, the importance of being able to be mentally well, too. And there are additional stresses in our lives, and we are by nature gregarious people. We like to be a part of our society, most of us, and not being able to do that is, can be very sad in other stressful ways. So being able to have good mental health. I love reading this article from the Cal State University Channel Islands that pointed to a young woman there who, by interning and working with researchers at CSUCI, she was able to actually win some funds to help her education. She's a psychology major, and how she found her call for her study is working at Growing Works, something our county recently set up, about two years ago. And she was able to be involved in a research program that's going on at Cal State University Channel Islands that follows the individuals with mental illness who are going to this drought-tolerant nursery and learning job training skills and social skills. And as a result of her work on doing the research and understanding the benefits of it, she's now going on to a career that way, and she's also won some funding from an entity on campus and became, let's see, the 2020, 2021 Newman Civic Fellow. And this young woman's name is Julianne Martinez. And it's just really nice to see our students learning and being able to be funded in their research for such a great cause, too, of helping people with, with mental illness, to become really functioning members of society, to become healthy, and to be able to flourish and get jobs. So I'm really happy that she, too, in a sense, is benefiting from Growing Works, too. With that, that concludes my comments, and I'll put it back to you, Chair Long.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Parks. Thank you for my comments. I just want to urge people, I know we are all going through many different struggles through our COVID-19, and to remind you to call 211 for any questions in regards to health, family situations at home, food, unemployment, many different questions that can be answered there. And I want to make sure people know that it's in multiple different languages and that you can also text. If you cannot be safely on a phone for one reason or another, you can also text, and want to urge people to do that. Thank you very much to our ag community for continuing to grow the food that we need to feed our hunger, hungry. We have a huge amount of community members that are lining up for food share to get foods. They're using our federal system food programs. We have Great Plates that's going on to serve the over 65 that need to have food. There are so many things, programs to feed our community, and I want to say thank you to the ag community for actually providing the food that we eat every day. I can't say enough to thank you because it's easier just to shut down on troubled times, and it's, it's something that we desperately all need. Also, I'd like to say thank you to Cal OES about the state trails and parks and beaches and working together with the cities and the counties on that. As LA does open up, if that is the case, it would be, I would echo what Parks and Bennett said in regards to parking, and also if we can get bathrooms would be for sanitary reasons to keep our beaches, our trails and so forth clean. I think that's an important message. I know that we have reported that we've had gloves on pavements in parking lots and masks and so forth, but we have to remember that even though this might be a COVID thing, bring a trash bag, clean up after yourself. I don't know how we, as a community, have to echo that every time. It's like your own home. Clean up after yourself, do your dishes, put your trash away. Those are simple things that we should all be doing, no matter where we are. And it just strikes me as a little funny to hear that we have to remind people to pick up after themselves when we're all in it for this place. So just please, pick up your trash. Also, thank you very much for those who are donating, whether it's with VCCF, whether it's providing masks, sewing masks, delivering flowers, food and so forth. Thank you to our community for stepping up in so many ways. We truly are lucky to have the county we live in and the people that live here. And Happy Mother's Day, if I didn't get a chance to say Happy Mother's Day to all of you. Thank you for reaching out to your mothers and calling them or Zooming with them, having those Zoom parties. Just appreciate everyone's outreach. I know we can't socially be together in the way we would like to, but to at least socially talk to each other if you can't do the physical distance. So those would be my comments today, and I will pass, I have a list of those adjourned that I've submitted, and I'll pass this on to our CEO, Mike Powers.
Supervisor Long, I forgot to mention one.
Yes, Supervisor Parks.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to take your time, but I did want to tell you a wonderful little story, like as you mentioned, of people giving. And we have an organization out in the Caneo Valley called Adelante Comunidad Caneo, and they were able to, with the help of Rosa Gonzalez, connect with Dole that gave them bananas, and they bought 5,000 bananas, right, that they gave not only to the young families that they're working with, but also were able to give them to our Safe Passages Program, the Manna Program, Calvary Church, Many Mansions. And so they went out to the port and were able to get 48 cases of bananas, thank you to Dole, and then bring them back to Caneo Valley and then distribute it to these other organizations that are out there helping to feed individuals. So that was just a really nice banana excavade that they were able to pull off. Thank you so much, Rosa, and the county. That really helped to put it all together. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Parks. Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Chair Long, Board members, for those, and thank you for those kind comments. We have an amazing team. Department I want to really highlight, just take a moment, is the Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services, Patrick Maynard and his team, which is comprised of dedicated professionals, both from Sheriff OES but also many department folks from throughout our county departments. And you don't maybe see them, but you see the result of their work. And this is a different kind of emergency, right, than we're used to, than anyone is used to seeing, than OES is used to seeing. But the way they've been able to adapt has been amazing, and you see it in so many different ways, the way we're talking about expanding our testing. Well, we need swaps, we need tests, we need the staff to do that. How are we going to do that? They're helping with us. Housing all of these homeless folks, 340-plus, every day and night, seven days a week with medical care and mental health care. Food for seniors, this Great Plates Program, the logistics of that is extraordinary, as well as getting the PPE that we need. And I know EMS and Steve work on that in partnership with OES, but there's just a ton of work going on behind the scenes that really makes a lot of this stuff that we're talking about here in these, in these slides and so forth, it actually makes it happen. And there's a lot that goes into that, in addition to the very positive relationship that you alluded to, Chair Long, with state OES, that they are a central player in all of this, and the fact that we have credibility with them is a big advantage for the residents of our community. So just a big nod to Sheriff OES and Patrick and the team. Want to let you know that well, that county, the community is doing great on the census. We keep score every week, and now we're in fourth place instead of, we moved up out of 58 counties. And so just continue again to encourage people to, to sign on and complete the forms online, and it's, the due deadline for self-response is October 31, but it's very easy to do, even I can do it. And so I encourage you to do it and get it done, and it feels good once you've done it. And what's important about that is it keeps and brings resources to our community. And interestingly, it's actually the businesses that use it the most. So more to come on that. Also, I wanted you to know that our team out here is continuing to work on their, you know, build their leadership skills, and there's a thing called the Ventura County Leadership Academy that we know your board supports. It's 33 talented individuals and leaders from our community, private sector, schools and government sector, and we have seven of those folks who, from the county who graduated, and just want to mention their names real quick. Sabrina Anderson, Rob Davidson, Mike Hartman, Mike Kumazawa, Jessica Ruiz, Crystal Stratten, and Alejandra Tez. And I just want to thank them and their departments for supporting them. It's a commitment of extra time to do this, but it makes a big difference for our county operations in our community. And last, just to let you know, we are continuing our community engagement with our legislators, including their Teletown Halls, and we have another one coming up this Wednesday, and Rigo and I will be participating with Senator Jackson, Assembly Member Lemon, and Congressman Carvajal. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up is going to be our regular agenda. We have item 13, which is the CEO's office to approve and execute contracts for the COVID-19.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Robert Bravo from the county CEO's office. What you have before you today is an additional request of $10 million to go towards, or to continue to go towards the COVID-19 response. To date, this will bring the total to about $15 million. This, we anticipate the majority of these funds to be reimbursed by FEMA with the state share potentially being about 6.25% or about $940,000. These funds will continue to support COVID-19 testing and PPE, as well as programs such as Project Room Cre, Great Plates, and Food Share. That concludes my presentation, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you very much. Any questions from supervisors? If not, I'd like to get a motion to approve supervisor.
So do, Bennett.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bennett.
It's been first by Supervisor Bennett and second by Supervisor Huber. Any further discussions? If not, roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes. So that motion has been approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Those are necessary funds for feeding our groups and purchasing, and so thank you very much. Next item is our public comment, Public Works for a temporary no parking zone. Hello?
Good morning. Chair Long, Supervisor, CEO, Powers, for the record, I'm Dave Fleisch with the Public Works Agency. The item before you today is in post-temporary no parking zones in Lock and Chita. So during the current pandemic that we're in, health officers order social distancing, as you're well aware, that includes when you're doing outdoor activities like walking. And as the beaches are a popular place to do that, as you know, we've been working beach areas to try to keep them open, but parking has been closed. That's been something, and again, has been discussed here about coordination with the state parks, county, everybody else to keep those closed. In particular, there's one area in the county where there is no designated parking for the beach, and that's up in Lock and Chita, and the primary parking for that is on two county roads in that area, and those are Surfside Road and Carpenteria Avenue. So in order to insist with that enforcement of the social distancing, it's recommended that parking on these roads in this area be prohibited. So those projected no parking zones, which are attached on the maps that you have as part of the board letter, are temporary, as I said, and they'll be to be lifted when the social distancing requirements are lifted or the end of this calendar or whichever comes first. Also, the order allows for the road commissioner to have some discretion to adjust, not making any longer, but perhaps make some of those parking, no parking distances less, should that be warranted by conversation or discussion with the public. That's the item. Be happy to answer any questions.
Can I ask a question in regards to this resolution? Would it, would it be important for us to have this temporary no parking zone partner with the state closing of the parking zone? If the state opens that parking, would this parking be lifted as well? Not when the stay well VC order is over, but to be hand in hand with the other parking?
We could take direction from you, or however you want us to do that. There is no immediate parking in that area by the state for this particular beach. It's really the only where you can park. So further down by, on the Rincon, there is, in that area, but it's not immediately for that area, but we could certainly adjust that however you desire.
Supervisor Bennett, it's in your district. Yes, I was going to hand it over to you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Supervisor Long, an answer to your question. Certainly, from my perspective, I think we have an obligation to not make this a long-term no parking situation. We're not, we're not trying to change that. This is the only beach parking spot if you want to use that part of the beach. So we're closing this to try to be consistent with our other beach closing.
beach closings. You know, if we close beach parking at the other places, this doesn't have official beach parking. It has sort of county unofficial beach parking, but we should close it to be consistent with that part of the order. But I would not be supportive of keeping it permanently closed. And I don't think we could ever get the Coastal Commission to go along with us on that because the state paid good money for that tunnel to go underneath the freeway for a reason, and it was, you know, to allow the public's access, not a private access just for residents who live there. So.
Thank you.
And the residents really get that. By the way, I would just point out the residents are supportive of this. But they really get that, that, you know, that this is a public tunnel. It's just, you know, we have the same issue. We're trying to be consistent. So I want to emphasize, this is a closure because this is the beach parking. It's, that's why it's being done. It's not a closure because necessarily residents want this or that. It does happen to work for the residents of this situation. And I really appreciate the working relationship we have with the residents there. But it's not to be translated everywhere around the county or even at this place, just because residents are looking for closure, that we're trying to do that at this point. So I hope that helps you at least understand what.
Actually, can I, can I get more clarification? Because on it, it says be it further resolved that this temporary no parking zone is automatically terminated when the social distance requirement has been lifted. So is that the VC Stay Well VC order, or is that the state order, or is that just the parking order? I needed clarity because it says then must be lifted or has expired or at 11:59 PM on December 31. So I just wanted to make sure we were clear as a board as what we're instructing our staff to do. And I didn't understand what part of the social distancing requirement we were talking about.
Can I, can I?
Yes, Supervisor Bennett.
The intention is that this go consistent with our order. We can always lift it sooner than the order, the way the board letter is written, but that it will definitely lift with, when the order, when this, you know, if the Stay Well at Home order is not extended after May 31st, then the parking restriction would go away at that point in time.
Okay.
County Council and, County Council and our Roads Commissioner, Mr. Fleisch, is that how you see it also?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and elaborate upon that, Supervisor Bennett and Chair Long. It is tied to the part of the social distancing requirement that requires the six feet between people. And that is in Dr. Levin's order. So if he lifts his order, that will go away. That is not in a state order. That is in Dr. Levin's order. So I think the intent here is to reference that requirement in his order. So if he lifts that, this no parking prohibition would automatically be lifted, or by the later date of December 31, if Dr. Levin does not lift his social distancing requirement. However, there is built in the resolution authority to the Road Commissioner to, as Mr. Fleisch indicated, shorten the distance of a no parking zone for chain circumstances. So the Road Commissioner would have the ability to respond to any chain circumstances, including whether the state opens up other parking, the county opens up other parking, cities open up other parking, to shorten it as much as he deems advisable. And certainly, he could come back to your board prior to any of these two triggers to ask your board to lift it if he thinks that's warranted.
Great. I just wanted to make sure we weren't being, we were able to be nimble to, because things are moving on a daily basis. Supervisor Parks, you had a question?
Yeah, you know, and I appreciate the need for this because as we saw when Los Angeles County and the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy all closed their trails, we all got flooded. So we had to take action in Ventura County. And as I understand, tomorrow, Los Angeles County will be opening their beaches, but not their parking. And I believe the state park beaches, so the state beaches will follow suit. And so keeping that consistency makes it easier, I think, on all law enforcement, as well as understanding by the public, even though, you know, I'm sure people would much rather be able to park. But at this point, having us all be consistent, I think, is important.
Thank you. So with that, Supervisor Huber, is that you?
Yes. Just a quick comment. While I completely sympathize with the residents of Lock and Chita, I just don't think this is the best solution. Therefore, I'm going to vote no. The best solution is to open the county beach parking, period. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Huber. Any other further discussion? If not, is there a motion on for the board?
I move the recommended action.
Okay, it's been first by Supervisor Bennett. Is there a second?
Second, Zaragosa.
Second by Supervisor Zaragosa. Okay, it's been first and second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
No.
Supervisor Zaragosa?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you. So that motion is approved four to one. Thank you for the detailed information on that, and I appreciate being nimble to work with the county and the state. So thank you. The next item is our correspondent agenda. We have items 15 through 23. Again, many are the Warren Act notifications, which is very unfortunate for our community and our workers. So with that, correspondent agendas 15 through 23. Are there any comments? And if not, can I get a motion to approve?
I move the recommended action. Steve Bennett?
Thank you.
Huber, second.
It's been first by Supervisor Bennett and second by Supervisor Huber to receive and file our correspondence agenda. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragosa?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, and that motion is unanimous. Thank you. Our board will now be moving into closed session. So we will be closing our open session. We have one item, 24. Please stay tuned to vceemergency.com for information daily on our COVID-19. Also, we urge you to visit our social media, both in Spanish and English. And we have a press conference tomorrow at 1 o'clock. In a couple minutes, Governor Newsom hopefully will have some good information for all of our county. So we hope to hear from you soon and have a wonderful day. Thank you very much.
And Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Zaragosa, yes.
Just a reminder, again, I hope that the supervisors, except for Supervisor Bennett, has a doctor appointment to join us for the 1:30 APCD meeting today. Thank you.
Yes, we have an APCD meeting today at 1:30. Thank you. Until then.
Thank you.